Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 30th, 2013, meeting of the NIC Board of Trustees. We are reconvening our general meeting from a executive session, and would you all please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a verification of quorum. We have all of the trustees here. I have no guests that have signed up, but we do have some public comment signees. First, we're going to go through the minutes. If there are any changes to the minutes. One of the things I learned in the seminar we went to is we don't have to have a motion and a second on adopting the minutes. We simply ask, are there any changes to the minutes under the new Roberts Rules of Order? So, since that seems to be very efficient, I think we're going to use that.
I can do it.
So, if there are no changes, if there are any changes to the minutes, let me know. If there are no changes, the minutes are accepted as printed. Now, we have signed up for public comment, three individuals. Please come forward when your name's called. The public comment period is available to members of the public. The comments are to be addressed to issues that are on the agenda this evening, and please try and keep your comments to two minutes. I know that's very short, and we're not real strict about that, but I got to tell you, we've got a long meeting here, so please try and keep your comments in that range. So, Tom Stasur.
Good evening. Long time, no see. After last night, I wanted to follow up with some specific comments. I had a chance to look through what Mike Myers had presented, and as you all remember, he broke down the PTE program into like four phases, and then the discussion ensued about trying to implement maybe two stages and what that involved. And he broke that down, and in a summary, it was about 102,000 square feet, total estimated cost of $26 million. And then, the bond council provided a matrix, so if you used his matrix on a $26 million bond over a 25-year period with the 4.3-something percent interest rate, it was about $1.75 million a year for the annual debt service, which is a number that you guys were discussing, about $1.8 million a year. So, that's just about $44 million in total payments over that, over the term of the bond. So, then after the presentation last night, you can tell how boring my life is, I looked back through the RGU study, and I think it's in that presentation that I made earlier that I didn't have and a lot of you had, but the total cost per RGU of redeveloping the Jaclyn Seed Company site for the entire long-term program for PTE, which encompassed 30 years, was $39 million. And that also included owning a little over 14 acres of prime real estate land, so well below the $44 million that you would spend doing these first two phases. And the reason I bring that up is I just want to make sure that that's not lost, that that site is vetted along with all the other sites. And last night, I also heard discussion, I don't know who it was, Todd maybe, who suggested you hire somebody to start digging into the details, a consultant that can start ferreting out all this stuff. And I think that's a great idea, and I think it will help move the project forward. I'm really glad to see last night that there was a drive to move this forward, set the site aside, work on what you need to get done, how much space it's going to be, what's it going to cost, and how can you get it funded, and I'm glad to see that happen. So, I just want to thank you for doing that, and whatever happens on the Seed Company site, we're more than willing to talk about the short-term options that we discussed last night in more detail. So, thank you. I'll sleep better tonight.
Yes. Thank you very much, Tom.
Okay.
Let me at least introduce as a guest Roy Glisten, who signed up, said he didn't want to talk, but did you want to say something, Roy?
Yes, I'm Roy Glisten. I'm with Owl Wall Contracting. Another representative here last night, I think, spoke briefly, but we just wanted to offer our services. We are local here also, and have done quite a bit of retrofitting for schools and various buildings of taking older structures or existing structures and building them into facilities like that. We did some of the work out at K-Tech, done a lot of the public schools around the area, so if there is any, you know, thing we can be of assistance on on consulting and look at the various options, we'd just like to offer our services. We're located out at Riverbend Commerce Park, of course, so, but yeah. So, if anybody needs anything, feel free to call on us at any time, so I'll offer. I know you're looking for consultants and contractors are, like I said, we have got some history of some previous exterior buildings, older facilities. We just finished 120,000 square foot facility in Crown West at Industrial Park for Walker's Furniture, a two-story office building inside of it, and so we've done some of that exact same construction just recently, so we have history of costs and timeframes, so, okay.
Thank you very much, Roy. Next is Dale Hickman. Dale?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I attended your workshop last night. A little history, our firm is H2A Architects. We've been the architect for the health science facility here, the Meyer, or excuse me, the Cedar Hall remodel. We just finished your new aerospace facility. We have a long history of work here at North Idaho College. And I listened with interest last night about your concerns and where you want to go with the professional technical facilities, and the one thing that I did as I sat there is I worked backwards off a drop-dead date for your welding program, which is, I believe, your lease ends in June 2015. And if you're talking about a major Phase 1, Phase 2 facility at $25 million or $30 million or whatever, worked that schedule backwards to arrive at a date that with a one-year construction, that backs it up to June 2014, two months for permitting and bidding moves it back to April of 2014, a very compressed design schedule of six months, and that is very, very compressed, brings us to now, today. So, if you were to, if you're going to try to develop a facility that you can house your programs that are losing their leases, that would mean you would have to start two days. That doesn't incorporate your bond election or all the up-fronts on the bond. I just want to provide that information to you to see that no matter what your decision, it all takes time. If you look at a shorter-term solution with a lease option, shorter-term lease, tenant improvement inside of a shell, it's still going to take some time, not this much, but if you're working off that drop-dead date to house welding at a different location, it's something that you need to address fairly soon. So, thank you.
Dale, thank you very much. That concludes the public comment, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is celebrating success, and Mark Browning is going to talk to us about the NIC Annual Report to the Community. Mark?
I have one of those, partner. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. For all those gathered, I know that we are often like the warm-up act for the main events. We'll try to make this quick, but I did want to take an opportunity to just give you a little background on some of the good work that's being done by some of the folks that are actively engaged in helping to bring the message of the college out, not only to yourselves, but to your neighbors and everybody within our service area. So, before you, you have the current year's annual report. This is one of the big projects that we do every year in conjunction with a number of the departments on campus, with the foundation and many of our other partners. We are exceptionally proud of this piece. I think it's some of the best work that I've seen done in a number of years, and certainly one of the best pieces that's ever come out of our operation here, and I think it's something of which you all can be very proud for the work that you have done and also that the quality that is exemplified in the work that's being done there. We've taken a very aggressive approach in terms of how we address that. There are some folks, if you'll notice, on the cover, very deliberate choices in what we put on the cover with an overview of our community, the messaging that comes that we're all working together, we're part of a bigger picture, and every part has to come together in order to achieve what our ultimate goals are. So, as we're moving through tonight, I want you to be able to see some of the folks that are responsible. I always get the privilege of standing up here and bragging about these folks, but these are the folks that really do the work. So, recently, we were notified that some of the work that's been done by our office is being recognized in this portion of the country and also internationally. This particular photo that was taken is part of the Coeur d'Alene Crossing event, which is an event that Athletics Director Al Williams is very intimately involved with. That picture taken by Tom Green won a medallion award. That is an original photo untouched, or unretouched, I guess, depending on what terminology you want to use, was part of a medallion award. Last year's Report to the Community won a medallion award for Heather Butler as well. I also wanted you to take a look at this commercial. This is a 60-second version of a commercial. We have a 60 and a 30-second commercial that was produced by Nick Grenier that also won an award here, just very interesting.
This is my classroom.
This is my laboratory.
These are my school supplies.
This is my study group.
This is my final project. Apply now for the NIC Carpentry Program. North Idaho College, start here, go anywhere.
That is just a sampling of some of the new type of marketing that we're doing. As you remember, just about a year and a half ago, we stood in front of you and we talked about a new and really a very unique concept in how we were going to address the marketing of the college going forward, and it has been Nick and Stacy's vision that has really had the determination and the fortitude to challenge everything that we have done in the past and ask why. Is it still relevant? Is that's the best way to go? And if not, how do we do it? How do we reach people? How do we reach younger students coming out of high school? How do we reach those students coming back out of the workforce? How do we reach the parents who are helping to pay for their education and bridge all of those? We're very proud of this work that's been done. We're very proud that it has won awards. We're also proud that we have an award-winning president. Your president, Dr. Dunlap, was awarded the Pace Setter of the Year Award just this last week here for this region. NCMPR stands for the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. It's just for two-year schools, and President Dunlap was awarded that, and very deservedly so, for our region, and he's also now one of seven finalists for the national award. I don't think we told you that.
Thank you, Mark.
He gets a little embarrassed by it, but he is, he's very much deserving. And speaking of embarrassing, so now it's my time to embarrass the crew that's here. I'd like Tom and Heather and Nick to stand. They're back there cursing me right now. These are three that could be here tonight. We call them Team Cecil, you know, Cecil, the cardinal mascot, and Team Cecil rolls out and does whatever is needed at whatever time. They rolled out this afternoon and helped to get to Sam Point to help assist in that event. This was at the awards banquet the other night. We have a number of folks that couldn't be here tonight, but this is honestly one of the most talented teams I've ever been around, and they work hard, they play hard, they love what they do, and they are as dedicated to this institution as a group of people I've ever seen. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's your team. They are here and they work for you each and every day, and it's just my pleasure to be a part of that team, and I hope you join me in celebrating their good success. They're a great group of folks.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on the report? You had us all in suspense, I think.
Do it.
Are there any questions?
Can we do compliments?
Sure. Yeah, any comments or questions?
Comments, okay. Well, the photography is wonderful. Joe, very nice picture. That's a very nice picture. And I just really enjoy it. I flip through here, and there's so many faces that I know and people I know, and it's really a professional product, and what a great way to market NIC. So, thank you to the team.
We have a, thank you. We have a little saying in our office that picture's good, words bad, numbers hard. And it really, it sounds a little silly, it really does, but it's a filter that we run through things because we find that some of the most effective marketing, really, we live in a very visual environment. We all have cell phones and tablets and computers, and, you know, we're bombarded by visual images, and we live in one of the most visually stunning places on earth. Why are we packing pages full of words when we can show a picture? And it really, so we're trying to work more of those visuals into our publications, and I really like the way they're turning out, so.
Any other comments or questions? Mark, thank you very much for your report. Our next agenda item is a report on the sports complex. As a reminder to everybody, I think it was just last meeting, the board okayed a study for the proposed sport complex in order to give us some perspective on some of the questions that have been raised through the ad hoc committee's review of this project. And Frue Development was hired. We have here tonight with us John Frue, the president, and also Joe Brilio, who is, I guess it's a tag team, they're going to give us a report on their findings, and would you please let us welcome you? Thank you, and tell us what you found out.
My mic, or do I need to do something?
Stand right here.
There we go. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the board, it's an honor to be here. My name is John Frue, and we are a tag team tonight. I'm going to introduce my company briefly and ask Joe to introduce his. We're a 10-year-old project and construction management company that specializes in public event facilities, and we operate in New York City, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Denver, Colorado. We just opened a shop in Hermiston, Oregon. All the people that work for us volunteered to come here tonight and to be in Coeur d'Alene, and a couple of reasons why I said no. One is I was born in Rexburg, Idaho, and I'm very proud of that, to be back in, to be in Idaho and working here for a brief period of time, very honored. Second, we look for interesting projects, interesting people, and this is certainly one of them. Ray L. Anderson and President Dunlap have been great to work with. The staff and the community, it's been a very brief period of time, but very intense, and it's been very, very helpful to us. I was a member of the Colorado Board for Community Colleges for four years, and that really gave me an appreciation for what you do and how effective it is. And I can tell you that two of our best hires, two of our most recent hires, were two kids that came out of Kirkwood Community College in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So, we get it, we understand it, we understand the educational mission as well as the academic pursuit and the athletic pursuit and the balance that that has to take. So, let me, let's do this, let's kind of flip through this, and I just hit the space bar, so I've kind of given you this, we won't dwell on it, it's just some of our projects, we've thrown some of these up. This is a $150 million project we just delivered in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and we put this up as my entree to Joe, is that we've seen so many people in your position make these decisions, and so many times, they will decide based on how much money you have, whether or not you have a location, how many seats you want. Honest to goodness, I've had a debate with a client that we didn't get hired because we were honest with them, and they said, we have $110 million, and we're going to build a 12,000-seat facility, and it's going up right now in the Midwest, and they said, we don't know if we have enough money. And I said, well, that's about $10,000 a seat, why don't you build 11,000 seats? Because there is no difference. You're going to end up billing 12, and you'll fill it four times a year. Save that $10 million, put it to contingency. They were so headstrong and certain that's what they wanted to do, so they proceeded. And you get yourself into trouble that way. You're not doing that. The other piece of the puzzle is, is you can't exactly decide whether or not that's the right camera or that's the right light fixture to buy if the people who are going to operate it aren't there at the table. The operation of these facilities is very difficult. It is not an easy thing. It's an industry with some people who are very good and some people who are not so good. With us tonight is a group that is very good. They operate our arena. We hired Hilton to run the whole thing. It's a convention center and a hotel, but they hired at our insistence, VenueWorks, to operate the 8,600-seat arena, and it's really just a beautiful facility. Here's the Bowl with the concert that we started, we had with Lady Anna Ballma on June 1st. This is our facility in Cedar Park, Texas. We show this one just a little bit because most of these facilities don't have a large-scale atrium, but these, this one, as well as the building we built in Broomfield, Colorado, were designed by Saint Combs Deathless out of Denver. 50 years in the business, they've designed over 100 of these, and they're good friends. And Mike Harvey, I convinced him to come up here on his own dime last week and work with us and look at the site. So, some of the things you'll see here tonight were at his courtesy, but very, very good idea of what can happen on these various sites you're looking at. So, with that, let me introduce Joe and then have him, we'll kind of tag team the presentation as we go.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe Brilio and my colleague Cory Pearson, we're with VenueWorks out of Ames, Iowa. The company has been started 17 years ago. It's privately held by a gentleman, Steve Peters, and we are a facility operator. We have facilities that are convention centers, arenas, stadiums, theaters, and recreation centers. So, we operate for third parties, for municipalities. We just recently took over the athletic facilities down at the University of Houston, and Cory is our executive director. We operate the Three Rivers Convention Center in Kennewick and also the Toyota Center Arena and the ice rink down there as well. Cory's been out in Kennewick for several years now, and most of our facilities are in the Midwest, but we've been at this for a long time, in this business for about 20 years. And I am a community college graduate. Both my parents were educators, and John, I think, was very accurate too, where we look at some projects and we're, as you get a little bit longer in life, you're a little more selective, and we didn't need much inspiration other than taking a tour of Christensen and going back in the bowels of that building to understand what's going on. So, we really wanted to take a very close look at this project, but also take our perspective, and we operate a lot of facilities that are midsize in smaller markets, that are peripheral to bigger markets. And so, we think we have a really good sense of where Coeur d'Alene fits in the macro area and the region, and we certainly have some support with Cory and his staff, so we understand the business patterns relative to the events. As we mentioned about Kennewick, it's a little bit larger building, and it does have some other features that we're really not looking at, but we do have that good perspective. We also operate in Brookings, South Dakota, which is 25 miles west of Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls is building a 12,000-seat arena, much like the Spokane Arena, but the Swiftel Center's been there for 10 years. It's a economic overachiever, and it's a facility that has to operate in the market, in the media market of Sioux Falls, much like Coeur d'Alene operates in the shadow of Spokane. We're also in Bemidji, Minnesota. Again, that's probably a good three hours from Minnesota, but it's a college facility. It has a hockey ice floor. Bemidji State plays their men's and women's hockey team there. We've opened four arenas and sports complexes in the last three years, so we really do understand these projects and the blood that they have. Otumal, Iowa, is a small town, about 25,000 people in southeastern Iowa. It's Indian Hills Community College plays their athletic programs there. This building is 93,000 square feet, very similar in size and scope to the sports complex which we're looking at, and this facility's been open for about six years.
Joe? Thank you, Joe, and Cory. The, we start out with pointing out that we're very mindful of a number of things that you were trying to do and you're attempting to do here. You know, we've gone back through and spent a lot of time, you know, finding our base of understanding, you know, the 2013 March resolution that you had passed and the ad hoc committee resolution in August of this year. We went back and looked at the CSL study done in 2010. We know CSL very well, understand their studies and, you know, the merits and sometimes, not demerits, but sometimes I think that it isn't always one size fits all. Again, that's where we have the benefit of having the operator, because most of the buildings Joe showed you, you notice, are in cold weather climates, and it has a huge difference operating a building and building a building in a climate like Coeur d'Alene or Bemidji than it does in Boston. And the same thing with rooting and booking these things. It's one thing to say you can get 10 concerts a year, it's a wholly different thing to find a promoter who'll take the rest so that you, to have no rest, to put the concerts in, and it's a rough business. So, again, we're glad that we had the opportunity to work side by side with Joe and Cory and his team. Throughout, what we'll say tonight is, and we don't say it enough, we understand that the balance to this project is education and athletics and community, which we think is altogether appropriate, and some of the conclusions that we'll reach have everything to do with co-location, with sharing of services, with community promotion. One of the best quotes I heard, Steve Wilson, we met with him last week, or maybe two weeks ago, and I said, do you think that this should happen? Should the community build this? And he said, yes, if done right. And his point of being done right was that balance that we just talked about. And he said, we don't, you know, promote just Coeur d'Alene. You know, he said, you know, you can take our picture and put it in a lot of different places, and just change the name, it's mountains and lake, and it's beautiful, but we promote a floating green. He said, give us that. Give us another tool to use to promote Coeur d'Alene, and then you really broken through and created something that's very broad-based and very useful to all of us. So, with that in mind, we pursued our study, and a number of things we're going to look at. This may take like 10 minutes, if you guys want to sit down. What do you want to do? Okay. So, we begin with some of the things that CSL recommended, some we agree with, some we disagree with, and we'll go through that. One that we disagreed with is you start off with what kind of a facility will this be? And you have two choices, really. All these buildings come down to two things. It's either a multipurpose facility offering spectator and flat-floor space and meeting space, or it's a single-purpose arena with a primary focus on spectator events. So, you don't have a singular sports focus here, you know, with, in Broomfield, we did. We actually bought an NBA Development League team and a minor league hockey team. It was all about sports. And, you know, here, though, it's a balance, so a multipurpose arena, breakout meeting space. This is So we begin with some of the things that, that CSL recommended, some we agree with, some we disagree with, and we'll go through that. One that we disagreed with is you start off with what kind of a facility will this be? And you have two choices, really. All these buildings come down to two things. It's either a multipurpose facility offering spectator and flat-floor space and meeting space, or it's a single-purpose arena with a primary focus on spectator events. So you don't have a singular sports focus here. You know, with, and Broomfield, we did. We actually bought an NBA Development League team and a minor league hockey team. It was all about sports. And, you know, here, though, it's a balance, so a multipurpose arena, breakout meeting space. This is not meant in any way to be competitive with any other facility in the community. It's complementary. You'll find that the kind of things that can go into this building is a flat-floor show space that needs 24 feet or higher span of free-span space with floor boxes every 30 feet with electrical and, and water. Those are the things that, that the, that doesn't fit everywhere. It fits very well in, in spaces designed for those uses. A commissary. Again, we think that it wouldn't make any sense at all to build a building like this and not have a commissary, not have a kitchen, not have concessions, not have that right onsite. And as Joe will talk about, a great opportunity you have is to marry the culinary schools, school curriculum with the commissary, so that students are not only contributing and teaching. Cory made the point, the students that built that house, we'll put them to work. I mean, there's some great opportunities here for, for sharing both, both curriculum and, and athletics. You're going to see that we're going to suggest an amphitheater. This is unusual, but there's a great opportunity you have because of what we're going to suggest on, and the site that we're going to suggest. And an amphitheater, if done right, if done at the same time, really doesn't cost much, but it provides a tremendous opportunity for year-round entertainment, year-round bringing people to the community. On-site parking, this is going to be a big driver in what we'll recommend to you, because you have to park cars. I've seen it, I've lived it. Sometimes you make mistakes on parking just because of your, your opening act. We had George Strait in, in Texas, of course. George gets 100 and a quarter, or 1 million and a quarter that night. Boom, write a check. Doesn't matter how many tickets you sell. Well, that ticket price was $190, so per car occupancy was about 1. We had built for about 2.5. That was a good valuable lesson. On the other hand, if people can't get there, and the streets don't work, and they're, and they're clogged, they have a bad impression, it'll take them a while to come back. So parking and access are critical to getting this right. And then lastly, we assume that the NIC Athletic Department will locate on the site. The teams, locker rooms, the weight rooms, and that is a big driver in how this is designed out. The number of seats. Here, we disagree with CSL's conclusion. They had proposed 6,000 seats. All I can say, I'll start with this, is trust me. You don't want to, you know, build 6,000 seats. I've done it with my own money. And I learned that lesson, and I wished I never would have done it again, and of course, I wouldn't do it again. We owned an NBA team, we owned a hockey team, and there's nothing worse than having a, a team in a, you know, facility that's played with maybe 40% or 30% of what you can possibly get. It's just demoralizing. It, it, it's tough on them. It could be a beautiful facility, but if it doesn't work for what you have, then, you know, you shouldn't do it. So we're going to start with that. 3,000. Why 3,000? I'll get into it in a minute. The size of it, 80,000 square feet, minus or plus 5,000. You could stretch this to 90, what you saw in, in Atumal, and there are a number of things that might move it up and back, all within a budget, but approximately 80 is going to give you what we'll show you. Suites. If possible, we suggest building a small handful of them. You can sell two of these, if not more, all, all four of these on a, on a game day per night basis versus the entire season. And, and it is a great tool to use to upsell for parties, for events. If the circus is in town, you'll sell all four of them just for kids' birthdays. It's, it's really, if you have the room and the budget in the, in the building, it's a great opportunity. The concessions, the full commissary we talked about, and in-house ticketing operation, the classroom conference meeting space, it's not just meeting space, but a variety of uses, multi-uses, the onsite parking and the amphitheater. The number of seats we locked in at 3,000, this could be 2,500, it could be 3,500. I think it's more likely, the lesser number. It is a threshold for hosting National Jewish, National Junior College Athletic Association events. It would allow 4,000 for a full concert, so that's very flexible. The, my guess is that if you had superb facilities and 2,800, you'd still get that, those athletic events here. So, you know, there's, again, there's no magic certain number. The better the facility, the better the, the hotel room nights, the better the community, the more likely it is that they'll, they'll not hold those things hard and fast. Larger facilities, this is the Spokane Arena.
Right. Spokane has about 11,000 seats. But we use the tool that Justin at Schuler has, and we looked at the Polstar reports for the last 10 years. The average show there is 5,300. Same thing at IMB with, they can seat 2,700, actually up to about 3,100. But the average-sized show there is 1,900. Even with Schuler seating about 1,200, the, the size for the typical event is around between 6 and 800. So the niche, again, comes to 3,000 seats. We know we're going to be in between, we're not going to compete against Spokane Arena. We are building, hopefully, a little better mousetrap than, than IMB, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But that's, you know, we think the sweet spot for this from an event standpoint.
Good. And then it's scalable and used for any number of things, and, you know, we've gone through that, I won't repeat that. The, now we get into what we're going to start, start zeroing in on the site and the attributes and the needs. 80,000 square feet, you know, why that number? There's some drivers, the number of seats, whether you have suites, commissary, storage and marshalling. So marshalling is when the trucks unload, that area, just before you go through the curtain and you're on the floor, that, you know, where they set things up. A ticket office, you can have a ticket office. I mean, that takes space. Classroom space, the athletic department space. These are all drivers to the site. Now, we'd like to talk about type of construction, because that, too, will have a factor on We'll divide our world into thirds. One is what we'll call framed construction. This is what you're used to seeing, some, you know, there's, there're framing, there's blocks, there's pieces that all come together. It's very, it's the most flexible in design and a more customized look, but it's more expensive and a longer schedule. You can, and this is an example of our building in Broomfield. Pre-manufactured, we've all seen this, is, you know, the, the metal barn that, that don't, doesn't have to look or feel or operate like a metal barn. And I think it's unfair to, to, you know, have that in your mind, so we want to show you some pictures and some, some ways that it doesn't look that way, but it's a shorter schedule, schedule, and far less, far less expensive. The cons is that it's less functional. Thank you. It's less functional. It needs supplemental exterior finishes, or, or you won't like the look. And there really are fewer design opportunities, there's less flexibility. This is Swiftel Center that Joe introduced a minute ago in Brookings, South Dakota. As you can see, that there's, you know, there's the building itself, but they've dressed it up with a lot of windows, a lot of design features in the front, a nice entry, so it begins to take on the look of a different type of building and at a far lesser price. Last is a tilt-wall construction. This is, you can just imagine, you're going to just pour a huge slab, and they let it dry, concrete, and they take the crane, they tilt it up, and it's just simple as that. It's very cost-effective, it's very durable, but the cons are that you have the least remodeling flexibility, and some, some can perceive it to be industrial or more industrial, and it can look that way, unless, again, like a metal building, you fix it up. This is a beautiful building in Prescott Valley, Arizona, you have no idea that it's a tilt-wall construction. But those windows are there, and they were there when it was poured. You can never put another window in, you really can't add on to it. You, you start to, to lock yourself into exactly what you have. So let's go to parking. This is a matter of math. We come up with 1,200 spaces. If you have 3,000 seats, 2.5 occupants, that's the industry standard across the board. Some will say 2.3, some will say 2.7, maybe 3. But you just think, when your kids are you or you're going to an event, chances are you don't have four people in a car on average. You watch people driving down the street, and it's usually, you know, one, obviously, but, you know, not, the average is less than two nationally. So you start to, you wonder, right, how many people are going to share rides? And it does matter what kind of event it is, but 2.5 is a very defensible number that we've used and has been used over and over and over again. You divide that by 1,200, 350 square feet per space. Some will say you can do less, that's true. My guess is there are a decent number of pickup trucks and larger vehicles here, and so you don't want to have a seven-foot bay, or, you know, you want to have a decent-sized bay that makes this work. So 350 of space, you divide it, and you come up with 10 acres. So two acres for the building, 80,000 square feet or so, and 10 acres, that's 12 acres, so keep that in mind. The NIC has narrowed the site selection to two options. The Atlas Mill Site, I'm abbreviating that name, and the Riverstone Site. Atlas Mill is 25 acres, so that's obviously more than you would need. Riverstone is 10 acres, and I think that's less than what you would need. The Atlas Mill Site, by the way, we assume that the railroad easement, which is two acres of that 25, is vacated and made available to NIC. And it assumes that the site will be within the LCDC and the city boundaries. I understand that's very important for the, for services and, and funding. So those assumptions we made without getting into the details. And there's our summation, 12 acres. This is the Atlas Mill Site. The line that, that runs across, for people who haven't seen this, I've, I've carried this on about eight cities, so let's see if it still works. This line here is the old railroad. It's an railroad easement, so the area to the north and the area to the south, and here's the Spokane River, obviously, is about 23 acres, and this is about 2 acres, runs right through it. So we assume that that will be vacated, that it will be turned over from the railroad to use on this site. And it's a beautiful site, it's a, it's a remarkable site. Here's what we start to have this look like. You can place these things anywhere, but what you want to do is have, you know, take advantage of the river. Again, that whole idea of, you know, let's create something. There are a lot of buildings that just sit out. There are a lot of buildings that are going to see a parking, and they could be anywhere. You have the opportunity to create something that when people see it, they know it. People in our industry, when they see the Cedar Park Project and with that beautiful facade and that atrium, they say, "That's Cedar Park, Texas." You see Madison Square Garden, and it's just a building outside this middle of New York. You really don't see it from the inside, it's different. Same with Boston Garden, but from the outside, you don't see it. You have an opportunity to do something from the outside and inside here that is, that is unique. So we placed it in the middle. We've suggested, you know, some new pass-throughs on the lanes here. The bike path would continue on, you know, eventually, what we would hope would be a continuation of the development and to connect to the campus and the town. Parking both sides, on the bottom half, the offices, there's some flexibility here, because you could easily put offices here and the, the, the meeting space down here facing the river. This is the amphitheater. All this does is, you can imagine, I'll over, overexaggerate this, but, you know, when you see a concert and you're looking at the stage, you know, that's all you should see. If everything goes right, you don't see what's behind. But what's behind is some very powerful, very expensive show power. It's on both sides, where they plug things in, there runs all the, all the juice to run this stuff. If you built the amphitheater somewhere else, you wouldn't be able to use that, you'd have to build it twice. So what Mike Harvey has suggested, and they had designed one of these for a client in Portland that they chose not to do, but Joe has some suggestions of, or some examples where they've actually done this. And now you're getting double-banked. You're using the bathrooms, the power, all the rigging, everything that's in there for the inside. You open the door up, you turn around, boom, it's outside. So for very little cost, you can have an amenity that will drive revenue, and that's one piece that we're very mindful of, that we were charged with trying to help you solve any operational deficits in the years ahead. We've colored in yellow five one-acre lots that, we don't know if this is possible to be done, but when we see a site that this big, we think of co-location. You know, how do you, how do you guard against possible operational losses? Because these buildings, you know, if you break even, you've had a good year. You know, if you hit your numbers, you've managed your risk. I mean, there's a risk in this, there's a risk in everything, it's how you manage it. Then one way that you can overcome that is by not selling, but, but leasing these for commercial purposes that gives you a revenue stream in the years ahead. We're mindful of the fact that the demand probably isn't there today. Over the course of time, it will grow, and you have an opportunity to, to monetize this investment. Down here in the red is the PTE Building. Again, co-location of sites. We came to this conclusion about two weeks ago because we saw the study, we understood it, we didn't have any idea if there was a possibility, but the more we talked to people, the more we thought it makes sense to locate that facility on this site. This is shown as approximately a 40,000-foot building. I understand the first phase of the PTE is about 34,000. It's very scalable. There's plenty of land to put this on. There's plenty of land for it to grow to its maximum potential if the study is to be followed to approximately 80,000 square feet. But the best thing about this is that these parking spots are about $1,000 apiece. That's on top of the $3 million it'll take to get the land ready. So $1.2 million approximately, just to pave and stripe and landscape and have those ready. So if you were to do that, then it might sit empty for a long period of time, unless there's another use, a co-location that also uses those same parking lots. And the trick is to find co-location, co-tenants that use them at different times of the day and of the week. That's why we thought the PTE would work very, very well. We did this very thing, by the way, in Cedar Park, Texas, and we had a 50-acre site, and we carved out 17 of it in the city, then monetized that investment, and it worked very well. So it, it, it was one that just struck us as an idea that a lot of details have to be worked out, but it could work very, very well. The second option is Riverstone. This is an eight-acre site, also on Salt East Way. It's a beautiful site. It is, it is a development that has been very successful. It's a great asset to the community. You're, you're hemmed in by, by development, so you don't have nearly as much flexibility. Could you put a building on this site? Could you have enough parking? Yes. I'm not going to kid you, you could do that. I don't know what the, you know, how the two prices would work out and the ability to secure this piece of property. But you have a far better opportunity to grow and to put something truly unique for the community on the other property, and that's why we're, we're kind of heading that way. Here's that same building without the amphitheater located on this. And you can see there's two parcels to the left and the right that actually go in it. But you can see it begins to gobble it up, and now you have no co-location, excuse me, co-location opportunities, and you've built another arena and see a parking. You know, and that's, it happens in so many places that, you know, people are familiar with it, it's easy to get in and out, but I can tell you, if, if you want that, that's what that is. If you want, in baseball parlance, a Coors Field that I was involved with, or, or Wrigley or Fenway, just imagine this in a neighborhood, or, you know, nestled into some unique setting. You can do it. You, you can absolutely make that happen, or you can make this happen. This will be hemmed in, this will be, this will not allow you any room to grow. The other one, you have tremendous opportunities. So, I probably got ahead of myself on here, but the co-location of the Outdoor Pursuits, the Hospitality Restaurant and Recreation Management, the PTE Facility, we leave there are dock site uses, including seasonal food and beverages, the amphitheater, the bike path, shared parking, all the attributes that we think make it an amazing site, as well as some that are unique to Atlas Mill. One was the sale of the outlots I mentioned. The spreading of the infrastructure costs among different uses, so it's not just sharing the parking, it's sharing the cost of the parking, developing that community asset and that's capable of outdoor entertainment and recreation. We put this on just as a map that we were supplied with by the president. This yellow is the town boundaries, the city boundaries, so this would have to be annexed, and, and these are the two parcels. This is the parcel in the Atlas Mill, and that would have to be brought into the LCDC District. And I think the last part of my, my part for this, and I'll turn it over to Joe, is what does it cost? Wrap all that together. And the range of this for an 80,000-square-foot building, you know, it comes as no surprise that the framed building is the most expensive, 3 1/4 to 350 a foot. Can you beat that? Yeah, you can. You're, you're not going to get You're not going to get below three dollars a foot, and I think that you're more likely going to be closer to the three fifty. And that's twenty-six to twenty-eight million dollars all in. That assumes approximately two hundred and fifty dollars of hard construction cost, just for reference, so that's about seventy-two percent. The rest is soft cost, furniture, fixture, and equipment. Hard cost, FFNE, and, oh, land, land, and that's a constant in all four of these, or all three of these, land and infrastructure development. Tilt wall is a little cheaper, two seventy-five to three hundred a foot, all in, and that's about two hundred dollars for construction. Allen, Texas, finished a tilt wall project two years ago, and they came in at about a hundred and eighty-eight dollars a foot on construction, so we think this is inflation proofed and approximately right. Manufactured, two twenty-five to two fifty a foot, and that's about a hundred and fifty dollars a foot for the actual building for the hard construction. And here you can get the whole thing down to the eighteen to twenty million dollar range. Again, that assumes the three million, or three point seven for infrastructure and parking. Now I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
We're going to talk about the operating budget, and it was prefaced by your resolution that you're looking for a facility that is self-sustaining and doesn't require any operating subsidy. I'd like to just offer that that is very hard to do. These buildings typically have some type of subsidy, and the facilities that we operate have small subsidies. It is a constant battle, a lot of times when you're doing a pro forma, and Justin knows this probably better than anybody else in the room, but you're projecting out for a year, yet the entertainment promoter doesn't make a decision on a concert until maybe four or five months prior. So you're going to project out for a concert that hasn't even materialized, or you're dealing with conventions and meetings where planners are two, three years out, there's a lot of more competition. So it's a very, it's a bit of a dogfight and a bit daunting, but these facilities all have an economic impact and the power of bringing more people and operating as a regional destination. And that's what's probably most exciting. You folks that live here know what a special place you have. What's been fun for us to learn is how the promoters, meeting planners, and agents that are interested in the Pacific Northwest as their market, how they view your community. And people want to be here, too. People want to do business here, and you have a state, too, that is very friendly towards that. So when we look at this project, we look at this location as marketing a destination. And we look at other markets, some that we operate are like Bend, Oregon. You know, they have these types of facilities and do this type of business. So we know that there's a mix of, we've got the NIC facility or activities, but then there's also other commercial activities that are going to be a part of this. I heard earlier, picture's easy, number's hard. We're going to get to the hard part, but let's look at some of these pictures. We envision a building that not only will take care of the athletic department's needs and all of their multi-events and their calendar, but a building that's truly multipurpose. We do equestrian events, concerts, trade shows, and wrestling finals, which certainly you folks do better than most people in this country. These large arena spaces house banquets, they do catering, they do, again, another type of trade show, but they do special events, corporate productions and introductions. And we have all different types of modes that the architect has provided us with. That's the event floor that's set up for basketball, but you can see in all the colored spaces to the north and south are different types of locker rooms and facilities, catering and concession locations, the yellows, the concourse lobby. But again, this is just a representative snapshot. This is the end stage set for a concert. Again, we're in our niche, we're bigger than INB and smaller than Spokane Arena, and we have the ability to also complement those facilities, but we complement Schuler and their programming. We have the ability to go, trade shows not only on the event floor, but also out into the outdoor area, too. So there is the opportunity to extend what is normal and provide for trade shows. You know, trade shows are such an interesting element. I'm not sure how many folks here have attended one recently, but, you know, you have, the workforce training program has a spa and salon training program. So, you know, there is a discount health and beauty products expo, right? It's large, it's in Las Vegas, but they also have four regional shows. So it's those kinds of smaller shows. Again, you can take a look at all of your workforce training elements, and there's a trade show for each one of those. On the community education side, there's an arts, crafts, and hobbies expo in Palm Springs in the summer. Well, there, you know, and that's in a facility much like this one. There are over seven hundred medical trade shows around the country today. And obviously, there's some large ones, but you have a phenomenal health community or a regional destination for healthcare. So there, we think Native American, there are seventeen trade shows just to the Native American arts and business. So we feel like this is a real niche that can be solved and prospered. So, and it also comes right to the heart of the educational mission. Our pro forma is very transparent, and Cory, could you hand these out? We're just going to share with the trustees and this pro forma, but it's a, as the numbers get hard, we wanted to let you know that we've got a whole page of assumptions. And again, as I explained about these buildings having an operating shortfall, it's kind of like where you have buildings that have the ability to be sustainable and give an effect of being able to reduce the subsidy, and this is how we've looked at this. Again, the assumptions that we have is that the building will have three thousand, a minimum of three thousand fixed seats. We know that the stage will have dual capacity. It can do an indoor show and an outdoor show. The attendance figures for the events are based on our experiences in our facilities. And the staffing model is very similar to, we just wanted to take a look at this building and if we were not worried about whether it was being operated by the college or by ourselves, how many people would you need to operate it? For example, and Justin, one of these Schuler is another example, you have, if I correct, five full-time, there's five FTEs operating that facility. We have seven in this pro forma. The revenues are very similar to the way Schuler keeps score for their non-NIC events. So there's a base rent that's charged, there are event expenses, ushers, ticket takers, those expenses are passed on to the renter as either through supplemental charge or it's somehow negotiated in the rent deal. But this building will also have the opportunity for ancillary revenues, and that would include some ticketing rebates, food and beverage income. We're assuming that we're going to be able to serve alcohol for non-NIC events. There'll be some parking revenues, sponsorship, advertising, potentially naming rights. So these were revenue areas that actually weren't in the CSL study, but we feel that they can be done here. We also are not using any student fees as in the revenue numbers. We're not charging rent to any of the NIC athletic programs or uses for that facility, for the facility, so, but we are trying to recoup the event costs. And on the expense side, no matter whether it's Schuler, a building of this size, or the Spokane Arena, seventy percent of the expenses for these facilities, convention center, arena, theater, seventy percent's labor. So, and that's pretty much an industry thumb rule and a standard. So regardless of size, regardless of all the revenue and expense pro-formaring, you know, generally, sixty to seventy percent of your costs are going to be personnel. So we have, in our pro forma, seven full-time people. We also have actually two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of part-time and student labor as supplement to the full-time labor. So we try to recognize it, and you'll see that it's fairly detailed about that. But we don't include other expenses, and there's details for all the line items. So this is what we would call generally a fully-loaded pro forma. Talk about management options, and we certainly are a third-party operator, and our feeling is, is that there could be a combination of both public and private to operate this facility. There are areas of expertise that haven't been done here. Opening a new building might be one of them, selling sponsorship, selling naming rights. These are skill sets that generally third parties have and have done well with. But we also want to use this facility and the horsepower that's here on campus to make sure that we can make available synergies. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about how those synergies work. This site, again, it's a beautiful destination, and there are some features here, namely the water, which help give us confidence in the pro forma, but also, I think, is a driver for some of these ancillary revenues. The top photo is the Mona Terrace Convention Center in Wisconsin, but there's large public areas that are outdoor, they're not expensive to build. The left-hand, lower-left-hand corner, Sandpoint, just showing you, they have a beautiful concert series up there each August, and they do it on a baseball field. So they show that, you know, you know that the outdoor market is there. We would have a facility that would complement them. We're not looking to do shows when they're doing them, but we would have a facility and we'd be able to go outdoors if the promoter and the acts want to be outdoors. We also have the ability to create a boating environment and possibly have a summer-only restaurant and beverage area that can be done. I know it's very crowded out on the lake every summer, and there's this opportunity, we think, with this site. We also know that this building will be tournament-ready and that you'll be able to host multiple tournaments and really expand the, your benchmark right now, and you're very busy, and you've also done a really good job of trying to bring more activity here with camps, and all this can be expanded with this facility. Then with this dual stage, this is a picture of Stage AE, it's right next to Heinz Field in Pittsburgh. And it's a little tough for you to see from the audience, but where, you could be standing at Heinz Field looking out over the parking lot. That building houses a fifteen-hundred-seat theater, the world's largest garage door that opens up to, and that lawn area, and then there's a flat concrete area that they bring in portable seats. That building does two hundred and fifty events every year, and it is a cash cow for the Steelers organization, and it was built on less than two acres of land, and it was built for about twelve million dollars. So there's, it's really a genius from an entertainment standpoint, but it really, as we saw the site, it gave us the inspiration, too, to carry some of the lessons learned there into this project. So we feel that this facility and your site and this market has an opportunity to fill what we call an unmet niche. We know that Quarter Lane routes well for promoters. Cory, do you want to just talk about your experience with that?
Sure. Most of the promoters, when they're coming across, will come across Montana and come into this area, and every time we look at shows and we're trying to route things through for the Kennewick Market, is where else can they play? I mean, you've got, especially in this size market, Seattle, Portland are a big, you know, big, big play. If they can't come up with dates, a lot of them will even skip the Northwest a lot of times. But this brings another facility in, into the market. There's been plenty of times that I've directed traffic, go talk to Wenatchee, go talk to Eugene, go talk to some of these other markets, because they need more dates to be able to come in and play. Because they don't bounce back and forth through Canada as much anymore, because the border's become such an issue for them to try to do it overnight. So now a lot of them will come across, if they do Canada, they'll jump across and shoot over. But the niche availability for this building is pretty huge. I mean, obviously, you've got your Spokane media market that you've got to blend into, but as this market matures and things develop, you'll become a standalone quickly. In a building like this, I mean, I see it, and just being able to drive through town and realize how much easier it is to drive through here not towing a boat. I got to go in a few places to look around, but see, and just imagine trying to do some of your concert rehearsals, you know, we always have the tour, looking for a place to have three, four days ahead of time and then do their show. I really think you've got some opportunities there, you know, that once you get people into your market, it's going to be easy to get them back. And you've got, you know, a few of your challenges in the front end, but having a facility that's flexible enough, I think, will just really get a leg up for you, and the promoters will come quickly. We work with Knitting Factory out of Boise a lot, they've also got their, obviously, their theater in Spokane. I've spoken to them just briefly about this, and, you know, and it's something that they're excited about. They do two events a year over at Greyhound Park outside, and, you know, they're looking at how can they expand that. They've got their fifteen-hundred-seater in Spokane, but they still do three or four events a year at the INB, so they're always looking to branch out. They do a route, they come through Cheyenne, they come through Missoula, and they come across, and they play us, they play Spokane, and they could easily play here as well. So I really think you're situated nicely, without having to stretch anybody where they're going. You're on the corridor, the I-90 corridor, you're, I mean, you're set. So to be able to have everything coming across all the way from the Midwest out, so it's not anything you're going to have to create, it's already there, so.
You know, when a show comes to town, the artist is getting paid, but there's also production expenses, and Justin brought up a very good idea, too, where the college could be training some of the production people, people on the lights and more in the rigging and the whole of the production areas. And what the advantage of setting up a program like that, as he has described, is that it helps keep the cost to host the show down. And at the end of the day, the promoter is looking for the best cost that is their expense, because the artist is going to get, let's say, fifty thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand, or George Strait, a million. They're going to get that again, whether one ticket's sold or, you know, ten thousand. But there are other expenses, there's marketing expenses for the show, then there's production expenses to host the show. And those expenses are really borne by the promoter or in a combination with the building taking some kind of risk. So another niche that's here is that we think that it would be less expensive to host shows, apples-to-apples with Spokane. So that's another inducement, and just gives, I think, a little more confidence, again, that these events could materialize. And we know that there's no really flat-floor trade show, really quality space here in the marketplace. So we know that there's a niche for these trade shows. And again, I think that the lovely Croc facility has proven, too, that if you build a quality space, even with no alcohol and a very modest marketing effort, but they've done very well. And in fact, you cannot rent any of their public spaces in the summertime for the next year and a half. They're already sold out of their spaces for Fridays and Saturdays for weddings. So they've kind of come into a market and found that there's a, you know, kind of a down-market niche that's not being served, and we think that with the culinary program, you know, we can exist just at a level above them, but well below the resort and the other first-class facilities. I'm going to come back to this one, but I want to talk about events. Events drive the pro forma, right? Every type of event has different revenue capabilities, different expenses. And when we did develop a pro forma, we operate with each event in mind. And there's four pieces to this pro forma, and I know it's very hard for some of the folks here to read. folks here to read, but the, the lower in the red is all the NIC athletic activity, which is significant. And we took all the events that have been over in Christensen, uh, except for a couple of volleyball games. We left and then talking that, that, you know, could we have all the volleyball? Yes. Do, is, is there, you know, are we going to have three thousand people there sitting? Probably not, but, um, at least, uh, those that we, that we can, we might be able to use it. Um, but, but we, we know that we have, um, all of the athletic events taken care of. Up top, we've talked about concerts and, uh, also some of the programming that Schuler, uh, could aspire to, but there are family shows, comedy, um, there's, um, also, uh, stage performances. These are things that, that might be available if Schuler was, uh, available. And you've got so many educational programs and other nonprofit uses going there, but I think, Justin, if I'm right, you had about sixty-two, uh, non-NIC-type events that might include some, uh, nonprofits, but, uh, there's, there's, there's a market there again to go after, uh, IMB. For example, uh, this Christmas, they have the, um, the Oak Ridge Boys, uh, there, you may, maybe you've seen an ad for it. Well, we could be doing Kenny Rogers Show. Um, so there's no, there's, there's no lock on just doing one Christmas show in the market that's as large as this. Um, so, um, they have, um, Brian Reagan, he's touring around, he's down at Corey's building, um, but, but there's, there's comedy, there are other acts, um, uh, Hall &amp; Oates, uh, well, there's, there's college bands, there's, there's plenty of activity and plenty of acts that we are very confident that we can fill, uh, the comedy and, uh, stage, family show and concert market. Then there's the, what we call high school sports cheer, community uses. You're already doing some of these events. This is the high school basketball tournament, it's a two-day event, uh, with eight games. There's, uh, soccer, uh, karate tournament, there's, uh, Gym Fest, which is, uh, locally run. Um, they, they have about fifteen-hundred kids that come through here. So we're capturing them in, in that area. The, the largest, actually the most profitable event of the Croc Center is a Cheer Fest in August. Who would have thought, right? They didn't think about that when they first built that place, but, you know, that's an event that's there and it's done very, very well. Um, then we have, as we mentioned earlier, the flat floor and trade shows. And then, um, we have what we call the culinary instruction and these are really, uh, coming right to the sweet spot of the educational mission of, of, of the college and that is, you know, to grow that department and their capabilities. You already have a restaurant on campus, we're expanding, uh, the envelope and going to the next level with the program. So we have culinary, uh, activities and, and, and events and there's going to be some meetings-only type traffic. So there, there's four elements that, that add up to about a hundred and eighty-one events. Revenue-wise, we're, we're, um, we feel that we're able to generate about one-point-one million in revenue with this building. And again, that's coming from event rent. Uh, for example, at Schuler, and again, uh, this is just a benchmark, you're doing about, um, I want to say about seventy thousand in rent, right? We're netting out maybe eighty-two thousand, so you can't say we're way over projecting on rent. We give, we have in our pro forma that we're going to offer, uh, rebates back to the promoters, um, but we, we, we really think that this is not, um, a blue sky, this is, this is a very attainable, um, uh, uh, pro forma that, uh, that we feel very strongly about. Uh, we also have, uh, ancillary revenues of food and beverage, as I mentioned before, we have some parking revenue in there, um, and, and for some of the bigger events, you're going to pay, we think, folks will pay to park, I'm sure when you're going to Spokane, you're paying as well. Um, and then, um, we're also, uh, with ticket rebates and other, uh, different, uh, pro forma, um, uh, elements on the revenue side. Um, and then we have, uh, naming rights and advertising and sponsorship. And again, these are, um, capabilities that this facility will have, uh, I think regardless of its size. And, uh, some of these dollars may have to go towards construction costs, but what we've captured here, we think is available to the building, uh, to retain and help make it sustainable. On the expense side, again, we had the full, uh, part-time labor, we, um, we have seven full-time people and, you know, and how do we, you know, we also have a subsidy of, of about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, uh, in the first year. And how do we, uh, but that subsidy does not, um, uh, have any of the synergies that are available, uh, to it. For example, you can't really, we wouldn't really build, uh, a facility with seven full-time people and still have five people at Schuler. Surely there's some, uh, people that can do both jobs. You don't need two event coordinators here, you just need one. You really maybe just need one manager. So there are synergies between both of the operations that aren't really made available yet. And when those synergies are applied, the subsidy comes down dramatically. The food and beverage director could be a, uh, salaried, uh, instructor. That could be a, uh, a budgeted, um, educational, uh, position, not necessarily on the budget of the building, but again, there's, uh, the ability to have, um, a staff person have, be in charge of, of running that food and beverage operation. Uh, the, um, I, I went, I was fortunate enough to go from community college and I went to Cornell to the hotel school. I worked at the front desk, I got credit for it. Uh, the front office manager at that facility was a student. There was only one full-time person and that was the general manager. Everybody else were all students. And I, I look at this facility as being the, the laboratory, uh, for your culinary and possibly, uh, hospitality program. But the event coordinator position there could easily be a student position, a super student that's there, uh, one, one student for the fall, one student for the semester. So that's seven full-time FTE can, that number can come down and all that affects, uh, the bottom line dramatically. Other, uh, anticipations are that the college, uh, already has, uh, grounds crew, landscaping, uh, IT department. So, uh, in our indirect expenses, we tried to allocate some charges, again, just what, uh, we know typically for a building of this size, uh, but we would anticipate that the, the colleges, uh, we'd take advantage of the colleges' contracts and their labor force to, uh, either allocate or use, um, uh, what's, what's available. Again, there, these are synergies that might, uh, have some saving. The, there's no question in our mind that the subsidy, um, these buildings take some time to build up occupancy, um, and, uh, we've given, uh, a pro forma that I wouldn't call conservative, but I, but I think it's, it's achievable and, uh, from, uh, limited time that we've had, uh, and the, the background, we're very confident in. So from an operating standpoint, uh, we've tried to give you a very transparent and, uh, as accurate as possible look as to what this building could do.
Let me wrap this up and turn to questions. You've been very patient, uh, we've gone through a lot of detail. And, uh, financing options was one of the questions we were asked. And there are a lot of things we'd rule out because you already have determined that the NIC would own the facility. But, uh, you know, it's, to state what's probably the most obvious thing is to, to use the foundation, uh, to gain the tax deductibility. Um, it, it's, it's practiced all over the country. Uh, the Naval Academy has their football field about a mile off campus, it's owned by the foundation. And all the round-alound and around it is, is being developed, owned by the foundation. Uh, Indiana State University, same thing. So this is really a smart thing, a smart way to, to capture, uh, financing that might not otherwise be available. Uh, the outlots to be created and either sold or leased, I think is a great opportunity for you. Uh, the co-location of the educational facilities on-site, including the PTE. Uh, if we've not been subtle, if we've not, you know, kind of drove that point home enough, uh, this is almost, uh, a, uh, it's a, a, a sports complex set in an educational setting. Um, your best chance of breaking even and even doing better at that, and your best chance of furthering your educational mission is to do exactly what Joe had recommended, to not just blend, but to embrace the opportunity you have, teach kids, uh, skills, uh, at this facility. It, it has a tremendous impact on your bottom line. Your five-year outlook will shrink, uh, in that time. And my only addition to what Joe had mentioned is that, uh, you have two choices, uh, and we're suggesting that you blend them. You can have a third-party management, you can have the university manage it. Um, uh, I can tell you, I started a management company when, when we had an arena years ago. It is a difficult business. Uh, you have Justin and his crew doing what they do, uh, for a unique type of a facility. Uh, what I suggest you do is look at a third-party management for those first five years. Uh, a lot of companies out there, not just Joe's or mine, or, you know, there's a lot of companies. You'll, you'll, you'll send out an RFP, trust me, you'll be overrun with people who want to come in and do it, but pick the one that will work with you, knowing that if they do their job, they're going to put themselves out of business. Cause if they do their job, they're going to teach you how to operate a building like this. They're going to teach the kids, uh, a home run will be if one of your students, one of your grads enters in the program, becomes a general manager when, uh, the professional company blends off. So that's entirely drabble and what a great success story. Um, so wrapping this up, uh, you have the report, we'll have a copy for you, uh, submit this to, uh, Ray Al and President Dunlap, uh, in writing, but, uh, you know, the multipurpose sports complex, uh, we recommend the Atlas Mill site, including the railroad easement and within the LCDC and city boundaries. Uh, that you master-plan the site to locate, uh, co-locate, uh, uh, the PTE and other NIC educational facilities. You share the parking, share the infrastructure. Uh, we recommend that you stay away from, uh, there's no reason to, to go to a framed building, uh, but that a manufacturer, a tilt-walt building construction, uh, would work very, very well in this, uh, community. I, I spoke with some developers, Joe and I both did, uh, that, who have built buildings, uh, in, in this market and, uh, received, uh, a strong, uh, vote of approval for either of these, uh, you know, of these delivery systems. Approximately eighty thousand square feet, three thousand seats, suites if you can get them in, uh, third-party and NIC management and using these synergies. Uh, and then lastly, what would your next steps be? Uh, you know, somewhat in this order, you know, secure the Atlas Mill property if you can get it. Grab it, do it fast, that is a great property. Uh, it offers you, uh, so many opportunities. Uh, decide on the co-location strategy and, and move to master-plan this site, uh, you know, from, from the very outset. You have some very, very smart developers in this community who I know are supportive of, of the institution. Uh, they've done this before, they've done it here, uh, you could take advantage of those smarts and those experiences. Um, determine the allowable uses on the property because, just because you might put something out for, uh, lease or sale, uh, you can restrict, you can decide who uses that. And so you, again, pick those users who will use the parking, uh, at a time during the week that's consistent with, uh, the, uh, sports complex. Uh, confirm city and LCDC participation and then most of all, uh, establish a viable budget, one that, uh, works with sources and uses. That's a long report, we hope that it's been informful and informative, uh, and if we haven't answered any questions, we're happy to do so now.
Um, John, Joe and Corey, thank you very much for your report. I'm sure that members of the board probably have some questions and Ron.
All right, John. First of all is, uh, how lucky are we to have you here?
Thank you.
Sounds to me like you've come with a fountain of knowledge. Uh, as Mark Browning is very articulate, I think, says, his pictures are nice, but numbers tell the true story. You got to remember, which you probably don't know, is we started, um, probably three or four months ago on this project and, and it was a six-thousand-square-foot arena and it was going to have five-hundred-and-fifty-one parking spots. We had trouble getting our arms around this and you've came back and assured us that that would not work and, and it was not the right thing to do. We talked about a, a facility that was going to cost us fifteen million, now we're here and it's twenty-four million. We were concerned that could we actually build something that would represent the value system of this community for fifteen million? And you're saying, no, that's not possible. And then we got a report saying that we were going to lose about a hundred thousand dollars a month to start and work our way up. And now I see in the first two years, the projection, uh, are in excess of a half a million dollars and a million-dollar loss in the first five years. And we do have so much competition here. So I guess that, uh, the first thing is, is John, this is incredible to get this information. I think it helps us put it into perspective that, that we've got a work cut out for us because if we, if we can't fulfill the commitments on these concerts and we can't generate this, this, uh, one-million-dollar loss in the next five years could be two-million-dollar loss and it could go from being, uh, uh, a significant jewel to our community to, to something that would be tarnishing. I guess my question would be going into, um, into a community like us, there's other mechanisms, I've heard, bed taxes and things like that, because as we go, what are, if you talk about the, the additional revenue that's generated from the community, now we just look at, say, is there any other revenue sources other than going to the taxpayer to subsidize this million-dollar loss?
Well, there are and, and, but you start to eliminate them if, if, uh, the, first if there's no debt, if that's a, a, you know, a given, then, uh, opportunities for master leasing for, uh, uh, you know, you, I can name a half-a-dozen companies that would lend a hundred percent of this funds, these funds to the college in exchange for lease payments. So instead of buying a car, you're going to lease a car and over the course of time. That fits a lot of budgets, it fits a lot of, of, of outlooks. I, I'm not sure that that's the direction you wanted to go, but that's an opportunity, for example. Uh, you can have a blended rate. Coursefield, we didn't, we were asked by the ownership at the last minute to add seven thousand seats. They've wished many times, we never did that because they barely filled the, fill it, but we added the seven thousand seats because there was enough capital to build that much of the building in our budget, but not for the seats. So we leased fifty thousand seats for ten years and we paid them off. So there are ways to do that, uh, as, as an example. Uh, bed tax, uh, hotel tax, Mark and we've talked about this, there's some legislation that's, that's possible that may make that available to you. Uh, I think capturing, uh, the value of the land is your quickest, most direct opportunity. Uh, you know, you, you could, uh, you could apply a tax increment financing to the land, um, but you're a nonprofit, so you start with that, so most of the use is on it. Uh, but then think about, you know, if, if that were to happen, I'll defer to Mark on that, that possibility, then putting out parcels that are retail, that generate sales tax, then it becomes pretty smart because you're capturing some of that back. So there are some opportunities like that available, uh, but, but I, I think the, the no-debt pledge was, uh, one that I'm not passing judgment on, it makes a lot of sense, but it, that, that pay-as-you-go will take some things away. Um, uh, if some of the legislative opportunities avail themselves, uh, then you really, you have to balance, uh, the existing, uh, use of, uh, the hotel tax, uh, or bed tax. But I, I think, uh, you, you've, you've closed off most of those opportunities, so I would say that you have the two, there are two opportunities that are immediate and real and, and you can land them. And one is how you use the land and the other is what Joe said. That half-million dollars in the first two years, we've been, you know, candid with you and we believe that that's where you'll end up if you do nothing else. But if you immediately embrace the, uh, the idea of taking part of Justin's operation and melding with this, uh, if seventy percent of your budget is personnel and you eliminate two of those positions, that number is going to come down quick. Uh, if you eliminate three or four of them, you just solved your problem and you've created an opportunity. So not many owners have that opportunity. You do and it's very unique and we encourage you to take advantage of it.
Follow-up question?
Yes.
So, um, I, I think that, you know, we are a resort town and so a bed tax, even though that that might be a funding mechanism, is going to, uh, discourage somebody from coming here, so we put additional tax revenue on our visitors, so I'm not sure that would be an option for us in, in this community. So, um, I think this, the toughest thing going to be for us is to get our head around is, is as a community college where our mission is, is to educate students, are we putting ourselves in a position to possibly assume the liability associated with that? But, uh, again, I want to thank you for the education, for the numbers that tell the real picture and, uh, we'll look forward to a follow-up after we get a chance to get our heads around how this is, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions, if I may. Uh, and Ron already touched on one, but I, I'd like for you to elaborate if you would for me. We've had a, a local gentleman that's, um, given us an example of a building, used the term manufactured building, uh, we'll call it prefab for lack of a better term. And that building was at about- And that building was at about $12.5 million, approximately 4,500 seats. And if I heard you answer wrong correctly, you don't think that's a feasible number. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, I think-
Is it such a unique radical design, or?
No, I think that that's a, that's a construction number, it's a hard construction number, and it's only about 70% of your costs. I'm willing to bet that that does not include site prep, parking. It doesn't include soft cost, architectural design, rigging. You know, manufactured buildings, so rigging focuses, you know, there's one of these pictures, you saw the rib that comes up and holds, holds the ceiling up. Rigging is when you see a concert and you see all this heavy stuff hanging. Well, those buildings aren't designed for that. So you can add rigging as a superstructure inside, but a tilt-wall building or a framed building builds that into it. And, and then the tricky part is that it's not just in one spot. I mean, you know, every building we do now is, we put the rigging all the way up and down because there are Cirque du Soleil likes to do, have, have their events right in the middle. Disney on Ice shrinks the floor and takes 2/3 of it. So you can't just have one spot where the stage is going to be, and that's the downside. So 12 and a half, I think, is probably a good number for that size, but I don't think it's the whole story.
No, that's a great explanation. I was hoping that you could give a little more light on, on the considerations that you were looking at. I guess my second thing would be, as much to the board and really to Joe, we've had an ad hoc committee, and there's a handful of us here tonight. Al's here, and I'm here, and Joe's here, and Ken's here, and there's a couple other folks. But to me, this seems like this presentation would be very appropriate if that committee is still viable, because there's a lot of information. I echo Ron's sentiments, great job, I appreciate the work that you've done and the information that you've provided. I think it's tremendously helpful, very insightful. But, so I guess I'm wondering, is there a provision, or have we thought about this coming to the committee? Because the committee is supposed to be making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, was my understanding. So I'm kind of curious how this fits in, into the equation.
Let me suggest that might be difficult for him to answer, and that's something that we as a board probably need to address. And it's a good question, but I think the board needs to, to address that question as to where we go next. Do we refer it back to the committee for further reporting, or do we do something else? But I think we do need to address that. Any other questions, Judy?
Just to follow up for clarification, you said you've given us some materials tonight, there'll be more to come.
We're going to submit, we worked on this right up till 5 o'clock.
I think the ink was still wet when you handed it.
We had 30 days, and so we, but-
A minute and a half, or anything?
So we're going to submit the written report to President Dunlap, and-
Which will have all the things that were shown there?
Yes, it will, yes, it will. We knew that there were about 15 copies needed, and even Kinko's looked at us and said, well, they're color copies, and they're just 50 pages, and this is going to take a day, so. So we wanted to make sure that we got the report done, and we'll submit it, and you'll have a copy.
Do you have a predicted timeline when that would be able to be back to our president?
We're going to submit it to him tomorrow morning. In fact, we'll probably just give the, the thumb drive to Real tonight, so.
Okey-dokey, so we'll have it soon to look at, then. And where else do you expect to share this, Mr. Chair?
Probably share it with the person who paid for the study.
Fair enough. That seems appropriate.
Todd, or, excuse me, Ron?
An additional question, John, is, there's a financial model that developed this, you know, we have the series of the revenue sources and the number. Do you have a financial model that will come with this that we can go into? And you say that we're anticipating, you know, some culinary instructions, and we're anticipating concerts. I'm sure that when you do a concert in a remote site like Wenatchee or in the Tri-Cities, it's a little bit different than here, where we have multiple locations. So aggressive number might be 12, and that's what the model is, but that based on our regional area, if we were to tune that back down to six and ramping up, what would be the financial impact of losing that revenue source? Do you have a spreadsheet that does that?
Well, yeah, the, it's about a $25,000 sensitivity on the concert side. But then again, for, we opened up a building in Evansville, Indiana that beat CSL's pro forma by over $1 million. So, you know, it's a very, you know, this is not necessarily designed to provide for, you're going to give up a concert, is it a comedy, is it Christian rock, is it? So each, each event has kind of a special event load. But if you took and halved the concert number, that would probably add about another $150,000 to the subsidy, okay? But by the same token, you know, if you added a dollar to the facility fee for all the events, we're only charging between a dollar and two, and I'm not even sure, actually Spokane's probably, might be 2, 250. But if you added a dollar, you'd make up half of that amount, just like that, too. So there are nuances, and we certainly can, it can help you take a look at that. But, you know, we've been very careful about all these numbers, and there's only about maybe 25 of them that really you can kind of tweak. All the NIC numbers, that's, you're already doing all that. So we're replacing with Christiansen, some of the attendance numbers have been boosted up. But it's events and attendance, as you've picked up on very quickly, so, but the concert sensitivity is profound.
Any other questions?
Yeah, only because I spend a lot of time in this. My understanding is these concerts are really, really attractive. You think about, you had one at your facility in Wenatchee. What's the, the, the American Idol winner that was there that sold that concert, the biggest concert you've ever had?
Ron, why don't you know that name?
Is that? I don't, because my grandkids know that name, I don't know. What was that?
Kelly Clarkson.
Kelly Clarkson. So I mean, that was, that was the event, for my understanding. But my understanding on these events, that it's, it's obligation of the community to put up the money, and if they fall short, and my understanding is if it's 5,000-seat arena, they come in based on this number, and if only 3,000 tickets are sold, that you can withstand a significant penalty and end up losing money on the event. Can you explain that?
Well, really, what, there's a couple different ways to have. If you buy a show, you're exactly right. You own it top to bottom, whether it's good or bad, all the way through, you get all the upside and you get all the downside. In the Tri-Cities, what we do is we do a blend right now. We share all of our ancillary income that we bring in, but we do it with a promoter. So that there is, if there's a downside, you can split some of that, and you help mitigate each other's risk. Because a promoter brings some expertise, they can, a lot of times get you a better price for that act than you may off the, you know, off the shelf. Or, you know, or the other one is that the promoter comes in, they rent the buildings straight away. That doesn't happen very often. Those days have kind of come and gone. So the, finding that blend and figuring out what's your, your risk-reward is, you know, a good example is you may get, if you, somebody say, I'm not going to go below zero, I don't want to share in the downside, but you can have 60, 65% of the upside. So there's a way to blend it and look at it and figure out what all it is that you want to put in the pot. But you're right, the only person that doesn't really risk at that point is the artist. And you, you know, you risk, you risk tens of thousands to get thousands a lot of times, but that's just, that's part of the game. And a lot of it's the marquee, because the other part that you have to weigh with that is a Kelly Clarkson date that you're going to go out for does help sell your suites, it keeps your naming rights sponsors happy, and a lot of those other ancillary incomes that you have, it keeps them happy as well. So you've got to weigh a lot of different things with it when you go after some of those shows.
Thank you.
Our pro forma, too, has a, if you look in, right below the event income line item, there's, there's a promoter rebate. So we're saying that we're going to earn maybe $100,000 in rent income, but we're also going to give back 25% of that. So we've tried to anticipate, you know, these, these winners and losers, but really, we're looking for the college not to take the risk, but we, but you, it is called show business for a reason, right? So you're in there, and you, you're going to get some, it's just like athletics, too. You're going to win some, you're going to lose some, but you've got to play and be competitive, but create the environment, having parking, having facility fees, having a good ticketing deal. That gives you abilities to deal and offer the promoter.
Judy?
Let me, if I could, this is so important, I don't want to let this go by without, maybe, maybe at the risk of differing from my colleagues just a little bit, I wouldn't expect you ever to put a nickel up for a concert. That's not what you're in that business to do. You shouldn't risk one nickel. Now, owners do that, and, and sometimes they have to do that because of what Corey and Joe had described. There are three kinds of managers out there. There are content providers, and there's only a couple of them, AEG, Live Nation. They're the ones that buy, if Michael Jackson, when he was going on this tour, AEG said, we're going to buy every concert you do for the next two years. And Kelly Clarkson has, she's, she's already sold out, somebody's already taken that risk. So if she has one dud, it doesn't matter. If you have a dud, it matters. That's why you don't want to be the promoter on shows. So I would say you should never do it. They're right, there are times when you might look at that and say, this is something that the community, it makes sense, or for, you know, as part of your package to host something, it starts to make sense. So your manager is huge, because then there's the content conduits. Which manager out there, it's not just, you know, they're, if you picked a band and said, how, you know, it's tough to get here, you know, they want to know, is it on an interstate? Is it where they're going to drive through anyway, can you root it? They want to know that it's a cool place, crazy as it sounds, they want to know, do they get green M&amp;M's? It takes somebody to do that stuff. And so your manager, that's that conduit, knows who the managers are, they know the bands, they meet them on the dock, they're with them until they leave. That's a huge part of this. So if you solve that, you don't have to put money up, you'll figure out that people want to be here. Not many communities have that, that's what you have going for you. But I just wanted to be really clear, these guys are in the business of putting these things in, but my mind, if I were you, I'd say, that's not what we're doing.
The other, the other part, I mean, we're talking Kelly Clarkson, that's not who our market is. A year and a half ago, the hottest acting country today is Florida Georgia Line, FGL, right? A year and a half ago, they were playing in Brookings, South Dakota, for under $100,000. Today, you'd be spending four and a half a million dollars for them, right? So it's, so it's, you know, guys like Corey and our managers, people like Justin, that kind of know, you know, who's out there in the club bands, who's playing over at the knitting factory at their concert facility in Spokane that are really going to hit the charts and take off. So it's really, you know, there's, there's a little give and take, and I will disagree, you will, if you're going to, with the grand opening, no, no, just with the grand opening, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to want, you're going to be spending, you know, someone's going to come out of pocket to buy an act to help show, but we think we have ways of really mitigating any, any of those kinds of risks. But, you know, it's, it is exciting, it adds element, I think Corey hit it on the head, that, you know, could we get, we have $75,000 in for naming rights. That number could easily be 200,000. How does that happen? Happens with a good naming rights deal. And you have to activate the ability to bring, you know, activity. Part of it is the college campus and mission, but also there's, there's the public and community piece to it, too. And that is possible.
If it makes you feel any better, I didn't know who Florida Gator-
Florida Georgia Line.
Georgia Line, Florida Gator, Florida Georgia Line was, and I gave our tickets away in Cedar Rapids. It sold out in about an hour. It was unbelievable, it just, boom.
Jake Owen is rehearsing in Brookings, right?
So these, so he's right, you know, these, you know, you can grab these guys on the way up or the way down.
This is a great rehearsal market.
Did you, was there another question, Judy?
In listening to your discussion about some of the events that go on, though, this is a college sports complex. Can you talk to us some more about how the college sports opportunities are there for not only having our own programs, but then the competition and bringing in other events in the sporting world?
I think, I, I, my father was an athletic director, and I am very excited for the staff here and the coaches, because you've already, you know, you've got kids that want to be here with the facilities that you have. So there's a, there's certainly a, an element where you're doing three big wrestling camps in the summer that could easily be four, or you're just expanding the number of campers that you can take during the week. But I think it really opens up a whole other host of events that really, that aren't in the pro forma. And that is, you know, some of the, we have the Idaho All-Star Basketball Games, but there are other AAU events. We don't have any of the national wrestling or at the NJCAA tournaments that those could be held here that you wouldn't be able to do right now.
This then you qualifies to have those folks participate?
Absolutely. So, you know, there, there could be on a rotation schedule, you know, Salem, Virginia hosts the Division III football and basketball and baseball, football and basketball finals, they've been doing it for years. It's because the community has, has supported it. So, so this could be a host for all these events. So that there are a lot of activities that really are not available because of the facility today, but tomorrow, it does open up quite a bit.
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing? You've got a great neighbor right now that you can help capitalize off of also. Looking at what Spokane's doing with some of the, the regional NCAA Division I stuff that they're doing, you've got an opportunity of, of being able to market to some of those teams when they come in early. But other spin-off is some of the bigger things that they have, that there's, there's other things that are going to be able to, you're going to be able to kind of go out and pick and watch, and just spend a little bit of time with your athletic director. I mean, you've got such a great ambassador in him and his knowledge base, that him being able to go out and touch a lot of those groups, that you may not get the big, you know, the pretty prize, but you're going to get all this other stuff on the side that has its own windfall with it also.
And my follow-up question was, enough of that to make this work?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of different things out there, and your staff you can create. One of the things that we do in the Tri-Cities is for our facilities, if we get into a slower time that we know consistently we have a window during this event, we create events, you know, and that's an opportunity that you have, and with a lot of your resources within the college, I think that's something that you can really look at. What's, what's a niche that we know our market has that we want to fill, and you can go in and do some of that creation? But you're going to have to be creative, because some years concerts will come, you know, you don't have enough dates left, and the next year it's softer. And that's where you've got to find that balance, and you've got to keep working consistently on your, you know, you need to work as hard during your great year as you do in a terrible year, because you've got to keep those relationships going. You can't just call them when things are great. You've got to be able to stay in front of them all the time and find that. In your market, when you're getting them here, it's going to be easier for you to get them back, you know, than a lot of other markets. So, I mean, I've, I've got radioactive, you've got, you've got water, so.
You, 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 they've addressed the, the event and marketing side of it. What I heard you also ask about was the facility, could this facility handle it? And, and the answer is yes, I absolutely agree with them, if you build it right. So as an example, we were with Al Williams, Al, the athletic director. I'm getting all my Als and Wilsons and Williams, I know, I'm thinking of Steve Wilson and Al Williams, and met a lot of good friends here.
We just call him Big Al.
Big Al, Big Al, all right. Big Al, I was with him last night, Joe and I stopped over at the volleyball game, and he and a couple of the coaches, we were talking, and we said, okay, help us understand how this works, because you have this gym, and then you have these facilities, and how many locker rooms do you need, and how's? So here's a way to come up with. You can imagine that wall to that wall, proximity from where you're sitting to that wall. That could be two very large locker rooms that a lot of teams and a lot of tournaments would really like. But every building we've done, we've not done that, we've made it four. So you have two that divides each into two, now you have four. And then each one of them has a separate breakout room for the coaches with a separate shower. So now you have eight, in effect. So you have, in some cases, there are women's teams, in some cases, there, the refs have to go somewhere. So if you build that flexibility in, you can handle anything they're describing.
Judy?
I want to say, Corey, you mentioned the Tri-Cities area, have you partnered with community colleges there on anything?
We do, we do the- We do, we do the NWA, the Northwest Association of Community Colleges, we do their basketball tournament. So our community college was, is very instrumental in a lot of the events that we do. We used to have the volleyball tournament, so we're trying to get it back. It went to the west side for a while now, so we're trying to get it back. But it is, it's, I mean, everything is a partnership. If you try to do it on an island, you'll be on an island. So you've really got to make sure that you're working a lot of those partnerships, and, because there's some, some areas that may have an event that you can help it grow. So rather than, you know, stealing it, you're, you use those partnerships to try to build it and bring it more so. But, as WSU grows in our community, that's a group that we're working with as well. We host all the high school graduations, so we have relationships with our high schools as well to handle those. So it's just really filling all those off days and finding the event, because, you know, from one day to the next, the building never looks the same. And we sell dates, you know, it's like the airport, when that thing sells, if those seats aren't sold, it's gone. So you've got to make sure you get all your opportunities taken care of before they go.
You still have another question?
Yep.
All right.
Are we close enough by, or too close, that whatever you found to be good programs could be shared with us?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. He was Oak Ridge Boys, Brian Regan, those are both dates that I have also. We're seventy miles from Yakima. We have some events that we can share, some not quite, as they get a little bit bigger. And a lot of it's the same issue that you might have, just because of the marketing, you share the, the market, so. Oh, that's, absolutely. So I mean, this is a perfect stop from Missoula over, but that's, I mean, easy. Anything within eight hours is, is an easy, easy play, and you try to stay out of the, the same market, so.
I'm done.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, just to comment.
Yes.
First, I'd like to, to really thank the donor that made this possible, that we could get this level of information from such professionals, and this has been tremendous for us, and, so much that answers our questions. So I appreciate the donor, and Todd's question of, can the committee see that that, the beauty of it, this is all taped, so even if we couldn't make that possible with the donor, at least they can review the...
I was hoping we invited everybody initially, so no one feels snubbed.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Before you sit down, I, I do have a, a couple of questions, and, and I understand that you'll be giving us your report. And as I understand some of the discussion tonight, when you went through the pro forma, particularly Schedule A is what I'm looking at, and there is a net operating loss at the bottom, and I think we've already always assumed that there would be in the first five years some kind of a net operating loss, and we're trying to get a handle on that to see what it might be. But you also talked about alternate, alternative revenue sources, like leasing sites, and that, I don't see that in the pro forma. So, that would be an alternate revenue, if we were able to lease a site, that would plug in to reduce this, as I understand it. Do I have that right?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. We, we built the model, Joe and his, his group built the model, but they did that in isolation, as a standalone, to see, what if you did this without any help, and what, what would fall at the bottom, and how much subsidy would be required? We didn't then say, we suggested there are ways to do that, but that's a policy decision for you to make, and if you make that policy decision to proceed, I know that you could succeed at that, and then where do you distribute those funds? But, you know, so we didn't say that. We think that you're not, you shouldn't have an outlook that you're not going to have a, an operating loss in the first year. We think you can certainly diminish the loss that was projected, or maybe even the second year. I think by the time you get to your, your two, three right in there, you're, you're gonna be doing just fine, and you ought not to have a loss after that. It's possible you can beat that even sooner. So, you, you have those tools to use, we just didn't want to presume that that's what you would want to do, so we didn't put them in.
I appreciate that. And, I also wondered, did you include the NIC activity ticket income in this income? So if we have, if we sell tickets for NIC activities, that would be an additional revenue source, it's not included in this pro forma. And then, you had suggested earlier that there are some synergies that we might be able to develop with existing facilities, such as sharing personnel and that sort of thing, that would reduce some of these expenses, potentially, depending on how well we're able to do that. And that's not included in this pro forma, do I understand that? Could you do me a favor, and in your report, just put a notation of the things that you did not include in there, so that we understand some of the things you've talked about that have potential, that are not in there, so as we read through this, weeks from now, and we've forgotten the great presentation that you made here tonight, that we're reminded of these things.
All right, we'll put it at the bottom of Schedule A, and probably do another schedule to elaborate on it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Again, thank you very much, John, and Joe, and Cory, it has been a very informative evening for all of us, and we really appreciate the skill and ability that you brought to us today to help us understand this problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we have a break?
I've had a request for a break, and I'm gonna use the chair's prerogative to say yes. Take a five-minute break. We are now back in session after a short break, and our next agenda item are the constituent reports, and we'll start out with Asnik, Benaya Chevers.
Thank you very much, Ken.
You're up, ready to go.
I am ready. Well, good evening, Chairman Howard, the board, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Dunlap, my constituents, and esteemed guests. I'd like to begin my report with a very, very brief story and a glimpse of how NIC has affected my life personally. I've lived in Corlaine Hayden area, North Idaho, my entire life, and I can remember as a child coming to North Idaho College, coming down here to Christian Sim Gymnasium, watching wrestling matches, basketball games, volleyball games, and it's just been a fun community to grow up in, and I'm very privileged to be an NIC student and be in a position of student leadership. And with the career and educational goals that I have now, I one day hope to return to NIC to teach English, and I think I'm not only a testimony and a story in itself, but there are so many students that NIC impacts, and right now, we're at an exciting point moving forward with the sports complex, with the different professional technical programs that we are starting to further establish, and the different opportunities for students. And it's just a really exciting time to see where NIC is going, and I'm excited to be a part of the process. There are a few committee updates that we have. The two committee charges that Asnik has written, one for the Student Union Advisory Board and a Sustainability Committee, are currently awaiting the committee structure review process. College Senate has just decided to wait on renewing any new committee charges until a collaborated effort is made with the President's Cabinet to complete the committee review process. Audrey Born, the College Senate Chair, will provide an update in her report in more detail regarding this. We just got back from a conference in Boise, at Boise State University. Seven of us in Asnik Student Government, our advisor Heather Erickson, and our intern Kaien Sanchez traveled to Boise to attend an Associated College Unions International Conference for their Region 14, which includes states like Montana, Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and a few provinces in Canada. This was a very, very insightful conference, where we got to network and meet other students from colleges and universities, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity that NIC and Asnik specifically provided for us to take that trip, and we hope to bring back ideas to Asnik to serve the student body. I have an update on one of our senators' projects. Asnik Senator Richard Fortman's project for the year is to increase the tuition and fees transparency of the college, specifically to provide clarification and to better communicate the breakdown of fees that students pay. The Asnik Student Government Board met with Ron Dorn and Sarah Garcia on September 24th in our executive session to receive a better understanding of the tuition and fees, and that was a, a very productive meeting, where we were educated on how the tuition and fees work, and get a little bit of a glimpse into the business office's operations. And, right now, the progress for that project is that there have been several updates on the NIC's website of tuition and fees, that include better definitions of what students pay for, and this is an ongoing project. Currently, we have two grant proposals being submitted to the foundation office that we are finalizing this week. One is in conjunction with Rick Short, Rick Schultz of the Culinary Arts Program and the NIC Gathering Garden on campus here. Asnik Senator Bob Mertens is a co-applicant with Rick Schultz for a grant proposal to get a few different things that the community garden needs to be better established, and we are in full support of the Gathering Garden as Asnik, and we're excited to see where that goes and the further establishment of that. Another grant proposal that one of our senators has written, Senator Rodal Cubius is working on a grant proposal to purchase laptops for his project, which is to have a study lap open after hours for students to do their work and provide them with the necessary amenities to succeed in their classes. This project, excuse me, this project also includes writing the grant proposal for the purchasing of these laptops that may be made available as students for, in the future, for students to check out. So that is a possible project there in the works. Asnik Student Government took advantage of an opportunity to meet one of our newer employees, Mr. Thomas Scott, the new Director of E-Learning, who was hired in September. We met with him on October 1st, and it was a very pleasant opportunity to meet him and get acquainted with him and share his inspirations and ideas. We had a day of service on October 12th. This is an annual NIC Day of Service, where students get to participate with faculty and staff on different projects, like going to the Human Rights Educational Institute, the Humane Society, the Habitat for Humanity, the Cootney County Food Bank, the Post Falls Park and Rec, the NIC Community Garden, and the Community Garden off-campus. This was a very pleasant experience, I got to participate in myself here at the Gathering Garden on campus. We were there, we were very thankful for the work that was put into that by several individuals like Heather Erickson, and we're very thankful for the faculty and staff that participated with the students and made that even more meaningful. We got to travel to the University of Idaho on Monday, October 14th, where we met the Associated Students of University of Idaho, their student government, and Student Events Organization, and I got to meet their president, Max Cohen, and share ideas, and that was a very, very productive visit. We also toured their campus and their Student Recreation Center, and we're inspired by some of the different designs and different opportunities that they have for students. We also met with Joe Beckin and Stephanie House on October 15th from NIC Financial Aid Office, and took advantage of educating ourselves about how financial aid works, and some of the different struggles that students have been facing so far this year. And, it's an ongoing process to better communicate how, how the operations work here on campus. I mean, we're all here for students, and we want to do our best to represent the student body. So I feel like that meeting was very productive, and we're gonna continue to follow up with the Financial Aid Office and see how we can better present the financial aid information to students. Today, I submitted the first publication of an Asnik newsletter. It hasn't been published yet, but it will be probably tomorrow. And it's a, it's a collaborative effort from the Student Government Board and Student Events Board to inform students of how student government and Asnik in general is serving them. I have a hard copy here, and I'm willing to email it to any of you if you would like to see it. Next Monday, upcoming, we have a Region 1 and 2 Student Council Conference for High Schools that's taking place here on campus, and two of our senators will be helping facilitate a half-hour workshop for them and encouraging them to seek out higher educational student leadership opportunities. And then, just a few more things in my report. I've invited trustee chairman to meet with Vice President of Student Services Grayden Stanley, Asnik Vice President Joshua Brands, and myself to discuss the current state of the Student Recreation Center project and the proposal that was from Asnik in the April meeting. Asnik is still very eager and excited to see where this project will go, and we look forward to collaborating with the board, NIC administration, and other constituents as we move forward. And we understand that this is a process that is pending, so we will be patient, and we're definitely excited to see where it goes. It's on the table, so we'll leave it at that. Also, please keep an eye out, just a reminder for the report from Asnik, I took a similar angle on President Dunlap's note from Joe, and I feel like this will be a very informative publication to inform students of what we are doing for them. And then also, I'd like to end on this note, Asnik is in favor of the current sports complex, and we see exactly where you are as a board, and we're in full support of whatever decision you decide to move forward with the sports complex. And from a student perspective, it's exciting to see the opportunity and where it might go, so please keep Asnik informed of where this project will go, and we are available if you would like student input. So that is all I have, are there any questions?
Ron?
Probably more of a comment is that, when the students go out into the community, you represent this fine educational institution, and the one that I might encourage you to add to your visit list is the Boys and Girls Club. We have two Boys and Girls Clubs, one in Post Falls, and one here servicing three-hundred kids a day. There's probably no greater reward that you can get, which is to go see a child that without maybe a mentor like you, and what you've committed to do, that would probably play a bigger part in their decision to go to college than to you to go to touch these students that are there, and a lot of times, they don't have parents, a lot of times, they're going home to an empty house, a lot of times, that they're, it's the last time somebody talks to them like a real person. So, some of these children there would love to have somebody come there and talk about your experience, how you got through school, what you're doing with your education, so you can change the life of many kids by just touching them once, so.
Mr. Nilson, I just want to thank you for that comment, because it not only encourages me to do so and take up your suggestion, but I have several dear friends, and I know Ryan Davis, the Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs here in the community, and I feel like that would be a unique opportunity for student leaders here at NIC to reach out to the Boys and Girls Clubs, and just take some time to go over there. So thank you very much.
Judy?
Mr. Chair. Benaya, your report is so good, and so many topics, and, you know, that's, for us, it's our favorite part, because we get to really hear from the students and the impact that you're having, and you're, you're very active, and, and that's wonderful for NIC. One of the things that you talked about was the community garden, of course, I perk right up, Judy and Ken, and Ron and Todd weren't here at the time, but I'm confident they support it. It's a little thing, but it adds to the overall environment, and to hear that it's a success, that people are enjoying it, people are using it. We thought that would happen, but thanks for letting us know, because we, we wanted it really badly.
Thank you very much.
Todd?
Benaya, one question for you, if I may. With this concept of supporting the potential for an athletic slash event center, sports center, sports complex, whatever we want to call it, do you sense then that not only the, the focus in, in Asnik, but the officers, but the, the general student body at large is in support of that, in spite of the fact it may be off-campus?
I think, if I was answering for the entire student body, I would say absolutely. You know, if we were to survey, I think we'd come up with a similar answer. And I think my reason and justification for that is that there is a, there's a greater need, not only physically, the facilities that we have, but a greater need as far as recruitment and retention, there's a greater need to serve student athletes, there's a greater need to serve the community, and I think any exciting, big project like this is gonna generate student interest.
Okay, and a follow-on question. One of the things that one of the gentlemen mentioned as, as a possibility was, you know, maybe the extension of, say, the bike path beyond Riverstone and, and down the river, and maybe that being a corridor and connecting, if you will, the, the campus to that outlined facility. Does that resonate with you as a kid? Do you think guys will hop on their bikes and, and ride on up there and check it out?
I myself, I am a bicycle commuter from work to home in the summer, and I've ridden that trail many times, and I can't speak for everyone, not everyone hones a bicycle, but it's even walking distance if you're...
if you're, if you want to take, you know, the 25-minute walk that it would be to go there. And...
Does that make sense to you?
It does make sense to me as a student, so...
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Benaya, thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Our next report is from Nancy. Staff Assembly.
Thank you Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees Members, and President Dunlap. Staff Assembly hit the road in October. Once a year, we travel 12 miles west, I believe it is, to Workforce Training Center, where they graciously host our Assembly Meeting. At the meeting, Marie Price, Director of Workforce and Community Education, gave an overview of the Workforce Training Center and the programs that they are offering. We had invited Tim Gerlitz, the CEA Director, to come speak to us about service animals on campus. We also invited Larry Briggs, the new Dean of General Studies, to attend the meeting in an effort to find out more about him and his new position. During the month, we also completed the assignment of staff representatives on college-recognized committees. This will be an ongoing process as more committees are recognized throughout the year. As Benaya said, on October 12th, there was the Annual Day of Service where students, staff, and faculty came together to volunteer at nine different community organizations. Over 60 volunteers spent that Saturday working at local food bank, making blankets for children in transitional housing, cleaning and sprucing up the HREI building, and helping out at the Humane Society. We also had another community service opportunity present itself when we were contacted by the Community Action Group the first part of October, indicating they were in need of plastic bags at the food bank. So we put out the word, collected bags for a week, took them out to the food bank, and the people were very appreciative when we delivered those bags. So we've decided this isn't the first time that this has happened. So we're going to set up a location on campus where we can collect the bags throughout the year and deliver them to the food banks in Quarterlane and Post Falls on a more frequent basis, hopefully helping them out. In November, Staff Assembly will begin working with ASNC Student Events on the upcoming St. ASNC Celebration scheduled for December 10th. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Faculty Assembly.
Good evening Chairman Howard, Trustees, and President Dunlap. I would like to report on the last meeting of the Faculty Assembly and to update you on committee assignments. Chairman Howard, on behalf of the faculty, I would like to thank you for attending our last meeting. There was a very lively discussion of tenure. The faculty asked many questions and expressed their concerns about the proposed workshop. Your responses to their questions and concerns helped to alleviate some, but not all, of the anxiety surrounding this topic. The faculty believes that in order to be effective, the workshop must have a well-developed educational component. There are so many myths concerning tenure. Many people believe that tenure confers lifelong employment. That's simply not the case. Tenured faculty members have been dismissed. Others believe that the granting of tenure is essentially a rubber stamp. Again, that is not true. Instructors have been denied tenure. There's very little understanding of the rigorous process involved in the granting of tenure. There's very little understanding of its value to the college. An effective workshop would begin with a presentation that would address these myths and include an accurate account of what tenure is and isn't. We respectfully request that the workshop begin with such a presentation. This month, the Executive Committee of the Faculty Assembly completed committee assignments for the year. I was stunned by the amount of work involved in this process. I am also in awe of my fellow instructors and the amount of extra work they take on for the good of the college. All full-time faculty members are required to serve on one committee or comparable additional service to the college. That they do. 29% of the faculty take on an additional assignment beyond the required duty. 37% of the faculty take on two, three, up to six additional assignments. Fully 66% of my fellow faculty members willingly take on more work than contractually required. After sending out a list of committee assignments, I received a call from a faculty member concerned about a particular committee. He felt that there needed to be more members and asked to be placed on the committee. I pointed out to him that he was already on five committees. His response was, yes, but this is important to the college. Put me on the committee. As I said, I am in awe of my fellow instructors. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you very much, Michelle. And Audrey's getting up to give the Senate report.
Yes, I am. Boogity, boogity. All right, so, good evening Chairman Howard, Members of the Board, President Dunlap. Senate has been busy. Tonight, I'm going to provide to you two reports, because we met after our last Board of Trustees meeting, or your, or our Board of Trustees meeting, and then again in October. So first, the September special meeting included a first reading of the credit hour policy and procedure, which was approved with some amendments. Next, the committee restructure project was discussed. Since this project is a work in progress, Senate recommended that no action be taken in relation to recommendations, that the policy and procedure on committees be completed in efforts to provide some committee definitions, and that a new committee structure be implemented next fall when the project is completed. Now on to the October meeting. A second reading of the credit hour policy and procedure was tabled for the November meeting so that Curriculum Council could provide us feedback in regards to that proposal. A first reading was approved with some amendments for the credit for prior learning policy and procedure. Mike Myers, if he's still here, he is, yay, Dean of Professional Technical Education, was present and very helpful in describing that policy and answering any questions that we have or had. Now, I have a list here of some first readings and some revisions, so just bear with me. A first reading was approved to eliminate the following policies. Policy 5.03, which stipulates that NIC will steward the financial aid process as outlined in the federal guidelines. It was agreed that this policy is not needed, because NIC has to follow federal policies regarding financial aid. In addition, Policy 3.02.13, which stipulates that no loyalty oath shall be required of any NIC employee. Now, a first reading was approved to revise the following policies. Policy 2.03.02, which covers the safety of students, employees, and public, as well as proper stewardship of college assets. The revision included title corrections, some basic title corrections. Policy 6.01, which covers employee use of facilities and equipment. That was, again, approved for a first reading. The revision includes to not allow personal use of college equipment. Senate requested clarity in regards to the use of rental equipment. Policy 7.01.04, which covers the use of continuous professional service contracts. The revision included that the recommendations for professional service contracts be presented to the President's Cabinet. And last, a first reading was tabled for a Human Resource Advisory Committee. Lynn Hill, Director of Human Resources, was present to answer any questions regarding that proposal. In addition, a motion was approved to table all committee discussions until the revision of policy on committees was completed. A subgroup consisting of Senators John Totten, Karen Rupel, and Pat Lippert was created to help the President's Cabinet to complete the policy on committees. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions? I know it was a lot. And we...
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you.
Good job.
Next on the agenda is the President's Report.
Mr. Chair, Trustees, and colleagues, good evening. The first thing I want to do is have Kylene Lloyd come on up and provide an enrollment report. The reporting period is different than we have done in previous years, and that will segue into what we have done based on the enrollments with our budget. Go ahead, Kylene.
Thank you. I put a copy in front of all of you. You've got it? Okay. I'm just going to hit a few highlights, and then you'll be able to take this home and digest it, because it's a lot of information. But I'll walk you through the first page. You'll see where our enrollments have trended over the past five years, and you can kind of see trends, not just in total enrollment and our total FTE. An FTE is 15 credits per one FTE. So in theory, it's like a full-time student. So you can look and see where we've trended over the last five years, and you can kind of see where we're going. The big news right now is we're just a little over 11% down in FTE. That's, that's a big drop, but it's on par with what we're seeing across the state and across community colleges in the region. So we're, we're pretty much in line there. With the exception of CWI being new and Boise, they were actually budgeting to be up about 10% this semester, and they're, they're at about 2%. So while they didn't drop, they didn't grow at nearly the level they expected to. So moving on from there, when you get to this area, there's three graphs on here. We have our academic programs, our professional technical programs, and our dual-credit programs. And I just want to explain a little bit here, because this is one of the areas where it could be a little bit confusing. The biggest drop we saw was in academic programs. That's where most of our drop in enrollment came from. In dual programs at the bottom, you'll see we're fairly flat. We had a little bit of an increase in the amount of students taking dual credit, but a little less in FTE. And that's largely due to the change in how we're teaching those students. We're trying to get most of those dual classes back out into the high schools, and so it's going to take a while before we have as many options for them in the high schools. So our average dual-credit student in the high school is taking less credits than if they were coming here. So, but that's ultimately probably going to lead to more growth, because we'll have more in our areas that where they couldn't drive in. So Sam Point, Bonners Ferry, Kellogg, those sort of areas. So professional technical in the middle, though, is what I really want to address. You can see we had a significant growth in head count, which is 7.41%, but a decrease in FTE. That has nothing to do with our PTE students actually taking less courses. It's mainly due to the fact that we did a reorg in how we do our CAOT courses. So some of those courses got switched over to being an academic course now. So we, we lost about 500 credits, seat credits, that way. Those students are still there, they're just classified different, so that's why we saw that drop from last year. Our F, our PTE students are actually taking more credits, about 2% more credits than they were last year overall, but there's less PTE credits to be taking, taken, if you will, this year, just because of how we reclassify the credits. So that's not, that drop is there, but it's not really in, in actual PTE credit-taking behavior. Other than that, I will leave the rest for you to flip through and read through. The trends are kind of on par as you go through year after year. We see continued growth in the amount of people that are taking at least one course online. You'll see that our outreach centers are pretty flat. This is significant, because they didn't see the drop that we did here at the, the campus, which may indicate that we still have, you know, a stronger, a pretty strong need out in those communities. With, with the Kellogg and the Bonners Ferry Centers, their enrollment is oftentimes driven by class availability, as much as it is students wanting to take courses there. We only have a certain number of instructors that are qualified to teach courses in that area. So if we don't have, even if everyone needs a class there, if we don't have an instructor that can teach it, you know, that can really impact the numbers there. And I know we're working, and Dr. Dunlap can probably speak more to that, we're working on, on those issues, so that's a non-issue going forward. But that kind of is why you'll see from year to year where the numbers in those areas can go up and down. But other than that, our head count by county, head count by feeder schools, and head count by state has remained largely the same. The trends are on par with, with last fall, too, so we're not seeing much of a difference there. If, if after reviewing this report, if you have any additional questions or there's something that's not answered, my contact information's in the back. And we report this data the 15th of October and the 15th of March every, every year to the state. And so that's why going forward, instead of doing it 10th day of September, we'll, we'll be doing it later in the semester.
Questions? Yes, Ron?
Quick question, why the reclassification? Typically, when you have a series of four or five years in a row, and you develop some historical data, and you see in trends, and there, was there a reason for this reclassification under professional technical education that causes change? What was the purpose of that reclassification?
I'll let Lita address that one.
We had courses that were in our business area, in the CAOT area, which is professional technical education, that were the courses that were basically the WordPerfect courses, so Excel, Word, Word courses, PowerPoint, you know, the introductions. There was usually three one-credit courses in each of those areas that, you know, taught those, that education piece. And what we found was, we had many general education studies students enrolling in the CAOT courses, which basically threw off our numbers for the state, because they were not truly CAOT students. So when we were reporting those numbers to the state PTE office, those numbers ended up being falsely inflated. And it appeared that we didn't have completers, because those students weren't really enrolled in the CAOT program. They were only taking individual courses to support their other educational studies. So it was recommended to us that we pull out the general education students out of those CAOT courses, so that we would truly have CAOT program students taking those, who were going towards that more in the business area. And we turned the, we offered now CAPS courses, a different prefix, for our general education studies courses that teaches the Word, the Excel, all of that. So it was really kind of clearing up the books here at North Idaho College. And yes, it is going to mess with our numbers, and it's always unfortunate when you, you know, throw a kink into the system like that. Hopefully, moving from this point forward, we'll have more accurate data related to our CAOT students and how they complete that program. And then we'll have, again, more accurate numbers on the number of general education students who are taking those preparatory courses.
Lita, it would be of some help if, in using acronyms, you tell us what it means, so that we have some understanding of what CAOT means.
Right here at quarter to nine at night, okay. I'm going to get help in the back.
We have a volunteer from the back.
Support, support.
Those are my programs, I guess, which you may answer. My name's Gabe Lippert. I'm the bishop chair of this professional corporation. CAOT is computer applications and office technology.
Thank you very much. Now, now we can all use CAOT.
And GAIN CAP, please.
CAP is just computer applications.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, where's another question down here? Judy, did you have a question?
Yes, I had that. This was more of an observation. Page seven, where you list the top feeder high schools. Am I reading the chart right, that the largest feeder high school to our institution is the GED program?
Yes. When you look at this, sometimes it can be a little bit confusing, because to say these are our top feeder high schools, this doesn't mean that this many brand-new graduates or brand-new people that just finished the GED program came in. They could have finished the GED program or graduated from Quarterlane High School 30 years ago. So, yeah, that's why you... So yeah, that's why you see. But yeah, generally, going back at least five years, the GED programs are, have always been at the top.
Mr. Chair, under that thought, unrelated to you, I was wondering if at some point we could have, now that GED programs on our campus, if we could have a celebrating success to kind of bring us up to speed on how it's doing. Keep that in mind, please.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question on the GED. We offer the GED here, but it's offered other places, too, as I understand it. Is that right?
Yes, and we actually, the great thing about the way we keep our data is we actually separate all of those out so we can track how many are coming in from the GED Idaho. The others are classified under, others outside the state, just under GED, and then we have a GED NIC category, too, so we can kind of follow all three all the way through.
One of the, it would be interesting to know, I suspect, where the, because GED is one of those categories that geographically could cover a huge area, as I understand.
Yes, and about, it's a little less than half of the GED students here are GED NICs. So they're a significant portion of it. And almost all of them are GED Idahos or GED NICs. So we rarely get people from out of the state or even really out of the area that aren't, that are GED students.
Another question.
Yes, Judy.
This doesn't identify homeschooling as a source of students here.
It doesn't this year because they're just not as far up in the top feeder school areas. So we just, we just go down basically the same number every year and choose those, the top nine that are in there. So in prior years, they have been in there. To give you an idea, there's lots of schools that are in that 100-student range. So once you drop below these, there's quite a few that are right in the same area. They go back and forth with each other every year.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kylene. The drop in enrollment relates to a budget reduction requirement of $840,000. And so over the past three weeks, we have gone through a process to identify those areas which we could best reduce in our budget. We examined $1.6 million worth of line entries and went through a process to determine which would least impact the operations. And we then made the decision on which of those would equate to $840,000 in budget reductions. And those areas included things such as the vice-present contingencies, utility savings that we had overestimated or overbudgeted for because of conservation, energy conservation measures we put in place, salary savings from individuals who have departed and we have not yet filled those positions, reductions in adjunct offerings based on the reduction in enrollment. We offer less classes, delays in hirings, which will equate to salary savings, equipment, line item reductions. And we were able to do that because you approved an equipment fund for us in last year's budget with an increase in tuition. And so we were able to eliminate individual line items of equipment in different areas of the budget now that we have a dedicated equipment budget. And then lastly, we eliminated travel. And next month, we will begin working on 2015's budget, so we'll get an earlier start on that than we did last year, about a two-month earlier start, and feel very good about where we are and then getting ready for next fiscal year. I would like to express my appreciation for all of the trustees attending the American Community College Trustee Conference in Seattle. It was a great opportunity for some professional development, and I know I learned quite a few things while I was there as well. And so I appreciate everyone participating. Today, we had the ribbon cutting up in Sandpoint for our new science lab, and now we are able to offer a complete AA degree in Sandpoint without students ever having to leave that community. I appreciate Trustee Howard and Trustee Myers attending, and it was very well attended by the community, and they are extremely appreciative of our efforts. The fundraising for that lab was done in Sandpoint and by our foundation folks, and so Rayelle is to be commended on that effort. The aerospace ribbon cutting for Aerospace Center of Excellence will be on November 7. Governor Butch Otter will be here to participate in the ribbon cutting, and I would invite anyone who is watching on TV or here tonight to attend that event. And I believe it's at nine, 10?
Cutting is at 10.
10.
It opens at 10.
Okay. In the morning, on the 7th of November. We have, on the 12th of November, our first meeting with the Albertson's Foundation and the Forest Bird Charter School to begin the planning process with a consulting company called IDEO out of San Francisco for the PTEC project, which is the online delivery of dual-credit instruction throughout the state of Idaho. And the three areas we will be focusing on are aerospace, information technology, and healthcare programs. On the 5th of November, we will be kicking off our United Way campaign. Laura Hill, she, I think she's departed, is the coordinator for that, and I very much appreciate her efforts. Last year, we had a dismal, dismal level of participation in United Way, and that is a very important give back to the community for many great organizations. So to kick that off, on November 5, the president's cabinet, along with divisional chairs and directors, will be putting on a free pancake feed for the entire college employees at 7 o'clock, I think, in the morning. And if you're around at 7 o'clock in the morning on the 5th of November, you're welcome to help flip pancakes with us and have one or two yourself. Lastly, I want to mention that Paul Marzetta was honored with being our employee of the month, and Paul is our divisional chair for physical education. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Any questions for the president?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Christie.
President Dunlap, you know, you gave a really good verbal rendition of the budget areas that you were going to, that you and your staff came together and trimmed. It'd be nice to see that in writing so that we could get our eyes on it.
And in fact, we will be sending that out to the entire college campus because we feel it's very important that individuals, every individual on campus understands where the budget reductions were made so that there is that transparency. So we haven't sent that out yet, but we will, and certainly provide a copy to the trustees as well.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
And then you talked about, some of those things that you talked about was you eliminated travel. So what, is that for the rest of the year?
No, we did not eliminate all travel.
Okay.
But we eliminated some travel in areas that we felt that we didn't need to take that travel. So for example, we may have an instance where more than one individual is attending a conference, and we were able to reduce there. We had some other areas that grants now offset some of our travel costs, grants not being a part of our general operating budget. We were able to reduce the travel in those areas. So we were selective in which travel areas we reduced.
Okay. Because I, my concern is having to cut some professional development that is really important to us for faculty and staff. And I would say that the board, really, if we're going to cut travel, the board needs to share in that. We have a conference in February that's rather important to us, is more for the lobbying aspect of it at the national level. And maybe that should just be one board member and the president rather than a couple at this point, something for us to talk about.
I think you'll find, Trustee Wood, that we tried to preserve professional development funding for staff and faculty. And travel, and I can look on my list here very quickly, and see if I can identify some of those areas. Well, rather than spending time hunting for it, when we publish the list, you'll see specifically where those come from.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Judy.
Review this, second, the process of choosing the cuts. Is this just coming from on high? How did the folks all?
No, we, what we did is we, and when I say we, I'm talking about PC.
Which is President's Council.
Forgot the acronyms. President's Cabinet went through a process to identify potential areas of reduction. We identified $1.6 million of possible areas that we could make reductions. We then looked at those reductions in light of our mission and our strategic plan and made decisions on what areas would be reduced that would have the least impact on our operations with regard to delivery of student services, delivery of instruction, and that sort of thing.
Any other, Ron?
Joe, do you think there's, that any of this downturn in enrollment is contributed to the increase in tuition?
I think that there may be a little bit to that, but the studies that have been done about the relationship between enrollment and the cost of tuition nationwide have shown that even large jumps in tuition have little to do with downturn in enrollment. And particularly with the community colleges, even with our increase in tuition, we are still the best bargain out there. What I attribute the downturn in enrollment to, which is consistent across the country where we see this happening, is that the economy is beginning to uptick a little bit, and businesses are beginning to hire a little bit. And so we have students who have an opportunity to get a job rather than go to school. We have students who are in school, particularly a career and technical program, where they have an opportunity to leave school and go to work, and they do that. So I think it's a combination of those rather than an increase in tuition.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your report, President Dunlap. Our next agenda item is old business, and first item on the, under old business is the career technical education facilities. Last night, we had a workshop that was a little over three hours where we addressed, we heard from a number of presenters on professional technical issues, specifically on priorities of what programs needed to be addressed and also funding methods. We put it on the agenda tonight so that we could continue that discussion. And what I would like to do is open up a discussion with the board to the extent that we want to, because that wasn't on the record last night. There was a workshop, it was not taped. And if there's any comments that the board feels it would like to make now in order to put something on the record or to help advance us to the next stage, I guess I'm going to invite anybody to make comments on that. Anybody? Judy?
I think to help, as you say, since it's not on record, we probably ought to identify the fact that our presentation last night had some priorities from our professional technical folk. And I, would those priorities be available to the public on our webpage? How do we share what we're thinking?
I suspect we can make them available to the public. Quite honestly, this is an issue that the board needs to deal with. Doesn't mean the public shouldn't know about it, but I, you know, those were, that was a presentation that was made by the administration for our use in deciding what programs we wanted to proceed to try to fund and correct.
And I was just using that as a baseline from which to talk with our fellow board members tonight about the fact that in learning what those priorities were for programs and the process to achieve those programs, which was programs and then followed by facilities, I think one of the things we discussed and pondered was, now that we've heard what the wishes are and what, I think all last night, everybody agreed it was a great need, how do we go forward with that discussion from last night? And as we talked last night about figuring out some numbers for what do we do, how do we get hold of this, we all agreed we'd sleep on it. And in doing so, I would like to be sure and share with the board tonight a roadmap that I worked up, and I think you all should have a copy of it already. And if this is an okay time, I would walk through this as a way to suggest some charting of a course for our administration to begin to look at, not because we expect to have all the answers, but this would help us get some of the answers. And this is a 10-year capital budget roadmap. After that, in parentheses, notice there are a whole bunch of zeros. That's because we're talking in millions, and so the little numbers in front of you are bigger than how they look, but that's because I didn't want all the numbers all over the page. So it's a real simple chart showing sources of money and then uses of it, and it really morphs into several projects. Tonight, we heard about the athletic facility. We've talked before about a joint-use facility. Last night, we were worried about how can we cover, do all these things and look at a professional technical building? And I think we agreed our first priority was professional technical building, and that we also wanted to continue our reserve funds that we have in the college for all the other things that happened, no less the new building projects. So as you see on the sources of funds, we have a reserve fund that we carry the next 10 years of planning, because these buildings don't just happen, we heard tonight, it's been a year's lead time probably to begin to plan, and then a year of construction. We listed on here some fundraising sources. The LCDC said they would help with the athletic facility, which would happen in 2017 area, and a community campaign for an athletic facility. There's a bond proceeds, and I know we've had some topics about, and discussion about how we fund this. Here's one idea. The first bond could be for the PTE building, and I suggested a number of 15 million. We've talked about some bigger numbers. But in going through this chart, if we felt tonight that we could have our administration take this chart and refine it some more, then we can come back as a board, as you've asked us to do, Mr. Chair, to keep this moving along with what does it take to really make these things happen. So there are some sources. The uses would be, always we need some set aside. We've tripped about this for years. Keep the campus repair and maintenance budget, about 30 million. Then come the new building projects. And here comes first, the career technical building, same as professional technical. By 2016, we'll need to have about $19 million. That number came about from using numbers we use in our construction for square footage costs. This number does not include the cost for land because we weren't talking about site yet. We were saying, what's the building and the program to be in the building? Athletic facility, you'll see the next line says a year later, we begin to look at that. And then the joint-use building we've talked about, that could be a couple more years out. But in order to get a big-picture look, I wanted to develop a chart like this to share with our board. Then we look at bond debt service as a way to, where our money gets used to fund. And you see the bond A for professional technical, 15-year timeline, and bond B for joint-use facility, and then the total money that would be needed. And this would be projected over the next 10 years. The little green box is a way to help me picture that in 2015, we begin to plan for the career technical building, and in 2016, we begin to build. In the column there, we'll give you numbers. Athletic facility doesn't happen until a little bit later. It doesn't get built till 2017 or thereabouts. The joint-use building comes along after that. So those are steps to say, last night, I was really about, now, how does this fit with everything else we're doing? So here's a suggestive design, not for us to do any more than say to the board, for the board to say to our administration, take a look at this, adjust it for what you see should be thought that I didn't have to think of. The conclusions I mentioned at the bottom were, we can afford to do these if we watch our capital costs, that there's money in the capital budget to continue the small campus projects. We need to have regular campus maintenance. Item four is, this projection has bonds that are smaller than the total cost. Balance comes from our capital reserve because we need to also help fund this. Christie and I have agreed, we don't want to offer the state that opportunity, but in the meantime, we'll keep planning on our own. Item five is capital reserve fund remains so we can continue to do things we need to do on campus. Six is bond maturity is short. Those are things I would think our administration can expand on and determine. And obviously, chapter seven, item seven is, this is just a rough cut at trying to format some numbers for format some numbers for our staff to look at. These are not final numbers. This is not an endorsement of this number. It's this effort to get it launched, and that would be using the range of about 19 million dollars cost for the career technical program building, facility, and does not include any land costs. So that's because we weren't, hadn't yet determined where the land might be, but it would get our staff looking at possible scenarios to keep this moving along. And I would hope by the next meeting, I don't know how realistic that is, but based on what the athletic facility folk did in a month, our staff can, can work miracles too. Come back to us. Maybe we need another workshop with another round of thoughts. But this I wanted to introduce to the board and, and see if we can't direct our staff to work with this and come back with some more information.
Any other comments? Ron, you had your hand up before.
I got a couple of questions. First comment is, is that two of the proposed, of the three projects where this is, there would be no land costs because we own them. Under this NIC share joint use, I see no assumption that there, we're going to get any participation from any of the four-year institution that we're supposed to be partners with this. Is there, is there assumption in there that they will?
Yep, yep. This is the NIC, NIC share is why I wrote it that way. And then balance from others. Balance being however big we choose the building, therefore, how many folks would participate. I hope that, that they'll want to participate a great deal, but we know the struggles they have on their own campus. And that's far enough out, we have some lead time to talk to them. And you know, maybe as our administration looks at this, that they have some various, you know, other ideas on ways to do it, or different priorities. These are the three we, as a board, have talked about, trying to fit that into the master plan of what happens over the next 10 years, and what things will change. Because we really haven't talked about many of these programs and how much technology can be involved in it to reduce the cost of bricks and mortar. So yeah, that's a good question.
Any other comments or questions?
A comment. Last night was a very three-hour-long discussion strictly about professional technical education, and I think that with all of the discussions, I think everybody's head was spinning almost like we're spinning now. But out of that discussion, I think that we came to the conclusion that we've came up for the last six months, which is that professional technical is our number-one priority, and that clearly with enrollment, it supports that. And we had a number of, of business presenters last night talking about jobs go unfilled. We lost one of us, our significant growth opportunity through one of our businesses here that left the area, and part of the reason they left is they couldn't find the needed skilled and trained workforce. So there's no question that we need to be spending a focus and get this going, figure out what our funding mechanism is, and, and bring this 2.4 million dollars that we're collecting in foregone taxes, and figure out how we bundle this, how we present this, and, and figure out how we fund a project and get something going immediately. So, and, and I would hate to get too distracted with any of these other projects. I think we have to tackle, right now, we're struggling just getting a PTE discussion done as a facility, and what that looks like, and, and layering this arm with athletic facilities and joint use facilities and all that type of stuff. I think that we need to tackle these and put them in separate buckets and, and deal with them instead of talking about doing them together. I think it's just going to confuse us, and it's going to confuse our taxpayers.
Todd?
Judy, Judy mentions tasking Mr. Myers and the gang over there with a bunch of stuff, and we talked about this last night. No offense, Mike, but I, I just don't know that we have all the in-house expertise and that we don't have enough of a view from the 10,000-foot perspective and a broader look. So I'm going to beat the drum that I beat a couple of times last night and say, I still think that we need to hire an outside consultant to, to pick up the, the ball that was maybe dropped a little by RGU and run with it. Football euphemism, hopefully that applies. But, so I, I'd still like to do that. I'd like to get an honest, honest broker, third-party independent person that's walked through the different camps, that's had some experience and exposure to, to some of what's gone into where we're at right now, maybe have some familiarity with the RGU report, may have contributed to it. I think there's some folks that, that might meet that criteria, that could be very helpful to Mr. Myers and, and his group as an asset, and then could also, as we work through this, coordinate with some of the other folks that have interests in the various sites that we're evaluating. So I'm going to beat that drum again. I still think we need someone to help us with some expertise that, A, we don't have as a board, and B, that we might not have in-house here, despite the, the fine personnel that we have. You know, I mean, that's just, it's not their area of expertise, they're educators.
Christie?
Mr. Chair, well Judy, going home last night and working on this, thank you.
That's why it has a, allow for logic and errors.
Yeah, well.
No logic.
Guess she didn't get enough of it last night, but, but thank you. You know, I think what you're trying to do here is, is just explore something, and you want, you want the administration to help us explore. I don't have an issue with that at all, if they explore some of this and report back to us. I don't want to give them busy work.
Hardly.
But I, I, you know, could certainly support exploring. The only thing I'd like to see added to this is the very particular issue right now of the short-term facility needs for PTE and the options, maybe with the Jaclyn seed. I'd like to see that, in writing what that could be. That would be, I'd like to make a motion to take this and explore, but I also want to add to that, let's talk to them about what, what the cost of 35,000 square feet is going to be over a five-year time.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
And what is the motion exactly?
The motion is to take what Judy's created, hand it off to President Dunlap and President's Cabinet, and explore some of these possibilities.
Just the numbers.
Just, yeah, look at the numbers. Will these, are these numbers feasible? Just to come back and report back. They don't have to spend every day on this. But with that, I want the, me personally, I don't know if the board does, I would like to see the numbers associated with the short-term solution for our career, career technical programs at Jaclyn Seed.
So as I understand the motion, it's to take the roadmap that has been proposed by Trustee Meyer, add to it a, an item of short-term solution to the three other plans, the career technical building, the athletic facility, and the joint use facility, and explore that. And I'm not sure what that means.
Well, the, okay, sure.
So we, we give good direction to the, to the administration.
I, well Judy's going to probably speak to this better than me on, on what she's pulled together, but for me, for the, the Jaclyn Seed discussion, I, I want to know the cost of a five-year, no, no commitment to purchase, and would house just phase one of our needed programs.
All right. And what about the rest of the roadmap?
Judy, help me with the rest of the roadmap.
I hear Ron say, let's not get too tangled up with other things. My reason to put the other things in was to show that we can have several things going on over a progression of time. The focus is on professional technical, so it seems to me right now, this chart can stay this way, but what we're focusing on is the professional technical part of it, which is both long-term and short-term. As I remember correctly, the description for facilities was, we have two more years on the lease with the welding folk. And so in this timeline, we could, if we got planning and cracking right away, could then only move once into the final long-term building. Now, that's my hope. Let's see what it works out to be when you all look at it. But it seems to me that's, that's the most cost-effective way we can do something.
Okay, so just so I understand the motion before we ask for a second. The motion is to explore Judy's roadmap that's been presented tonight, but specifically focused on the career technical building, and adding to it the Jaclyn potential and the cost over five years.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is essentially just facilities planning, which I think we've already done some of that.
I know, but I, I mean, when we have a motion and we tell the administration to do something, I think they need to know the context in which they're supposed to do something. And the word explore is fairly vague. And are we going, because I'm going to ask again, I suspect, are we going to authorize them to go out and obtain assistance by, by hiring experts, which is one of the suggestions in this exploration process? So.
Well, that's not my motion, but that could be an additional motion after we're done.
All right. We don't have a motion yet, but do we have a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now we, this motion has been seconded. Ron, you had some questions or comments?
Just, my suggestion would be, is I agree with, with Christie and with Judy, is that I'm not convinced, and after the three hours last night, I'm still not convinced that if we put all of our wheels in motion, that we can have a facility built in a timely fashion to be able to move these people from, at the, currently at Udo Tech, where they're on the two-year lease, and us passing a bond, getting the facility built, we're going to have to deal with something in the short term to bridge that. So my suggestion would be is that we make these two separate motions. Motion number one is that we, we ask the Jaclyn Seed Company to, to provide us with an outfit costs, the lease costs, and includes the outfit for us for a five-year lease to maybe move one, two, three, four of the most needed courses into them, and with an understanding is we have no long-term commitment from them. This is a bridge to get us from a lack of facilities to the Jaclyn property, and then at the end of the five-year term, we are now in a position to move those into our own current facility. So I think if we do the one proposal, which is a Jaclyn seed cost per square footage that would include their leasehold improvements, then we go to lay in this over the top of this and see where that, that would fit with this as a timeline to see, is this a realistic timeline for us to be able to do that? And I think it would give us a very, a clearer visual aid of where we're going with that.
Let me just interject here. The Jaclyn proposal that was originally given to us was never a commitment to buy. It was always an option to buy at the end. That was part of it. So I don't think they've ever talked about obligating us to buy. And I appreciate that we've made the distinction, we don't want to be obligated, but I don't think that was ever one of their proposals. It, it was always an option at the end if we wanted to. The other thing that I, I guess I want to make sure that we, if we're going to have this as a separate motion or a part of one motion, is that they have proposed landlord improvements to the superstructure and to the grounds. They had not proposed tenant improvements, or excuse me, landlord improvements to break it up into usable space on the inside. So if we want them to do that, if that's, that's something different than what they had proposed before, I think they've indicated to us that they might want some compensation for having to hire architects and stuff like that and do that sort of thing. And I guess I want to know if we're going to authorize the administration to do whatever is necessary in order to get a workable plan, which includes the interior improvements necessary to meet our needs. Ron?
Well, Ken, the, the, the report and the conversation that we had with the Jaclyn group last night, the only document that I saw from them, the numbers, included a 10-year lease and a purchase as a package. And what I said to Tom last night is that, that we thought that was what you wanted, and that you were taking that improvements, capital improvements, it needed to be leasehold improvements, and putting it on with the lease, and then it was all part of the purchase. And he said, well, that's what RGU asked us to do, and that's what we reported. But then he was clear, where he said, we are prepared to reduce this to a five-year term. You just tell us what you want, and we will come back to you with a price per square footage with these leaseholds improvement. And they were talking in the 33 cents a square foot lease, but I'm sure that they're going to have to have some leasehold improvements associated. So I assume, I've been in the buildings before, some of these are 35,000 square feet. We need to be able to bring the, the insulation, the lighting, the power, and do the outfit. And then there's going to be some internal leasehold improvements for dividing that up. Some of that has a residual value. If they're going to sell the building down there before, they will make the distinction what that is. And if they come back at a 40 cents a square foot lease rate, we look at that and we say, well, this is probably, takes care of our short-term needs, doesn't obligate us, and then we build a purpose-built building.
And I hear your suggestion, and I just want to know whether we're going to authorize the administration to spend money to get that final product. Because again, I think maybe Jaclyn will, will go out and, they have already offered to give us an estimate of the, of the landlord improvements, the leasehold improvements by the landlord, which would include the, the superstructure, the power, the heating, because there's some insulation needs to be done. What they weren't going to do was build out the inside of the building in order to accommodate the different programs we were going to put in there. We would have to do that. So if that's part of our request, and we want them to do it, then we need to, I need to know, or I think our administration needs to know whether we're willing to pay them to get that additional.
My conversation, Ken, with, with Bruce Seer and Tom Sosso, is that they are prepared to, to take care of all the engineering, as long as we give them the size and the dimensions that we need for structure, they will make all those improvements and, and fold that into a lease price. So I don't think it's going to cost us anything.
I, I agree that they would build it into a leasehold price.
Right.
In terms of getting an estimate to it, though.
They, they will do that.
Well, if they won't do it, I guess my question is, what are we authorizing our administration to do? Just inquire and then come back to us?
That's, that's what I would, that would be my motion.
Then, right, then to inquire if there's any additional costs for getting a build out for the programs that we need and what the cost would be per square foot or whatever.
That's a second motion?
I'm, I'm, this is just a discussion.
Clarifying.
This is a discussion on your motion right now.
Yeah.
We can clarify, you can withdraw your motion, and we can do other things, but we need to, I think, get clear direction for the administration on what we're authorizing them to do. And on the Jaclyn proposal, my understanding is that we're authorizing the administration to go back and explore with Jaclyn, whatever's necessary in order to get a, a lease price for a turnkey operation in order to meet our short-term professional technical needs. Is that correct?
I believe that is right.
Okay. Now, if everybody agrees with that, we can either make that as a motion, or we can...
I, I know Ron wanted to separate out the motion, and, and I don't object to that. I still want to move forward with what Judy's presented, but I would rescind my motion, and we can make it two separate motions. I'm fine with that.
So is that your motion, that we're going to authorize the, Ron? This is your motion? We're going to authorize the administration to explore with Jaclyn a plan to provide a turnkey operation for meeting our short-term professional technical needs?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So where did your motion go? Did it get withdrawn?
No, no. Yes, it was.
Yeah, I'm going to start over.
All right. Now, that handles the, exploring the Jaclyn operation for short-term needs. We still have the proposal that Judy has brought forward in terms of exploring the long-term solution, and the way it's set out in her plan, even the planning wouldn't start until 2015.
And planning would start sooner.
Well, it looks like, maybe I've got the lines mixed up.
At this hour, that's entirely possible.
So in terms of exploring the long-term solution to the career technical facilities, how do you want to handle that?
Do you want to make a motion, Judy?
You have it, didn't you?
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to support what Judy has brought forward to explore the long-term facilities needs. And explore just means go back and look at these numbers.
Yep.
Tell us if they work, if they work in the timeline, and just come back with a report.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. Is that clear enough for you?
[laughing]
I mean, I want to make sure that we have...
I understand. The only thing I would want to know is how soon you want that.
I was going to ask that question next. What's reasonable for you?
Yeah, what's the timeline that you want it back?
You know, whatever reasonable for you.
Certainly, yes. Next board meeting for an update at least, if not a...
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So, so hang on a minute. Before we get too far down the line, we've got a motion that Ron made, all right, on the Jaclyn facility. It was seconded by Christie, I think.
Correct.
Let's vote on it. All in favor?
Oh, thank you. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's passed. Now we have a motion to explore the long-term solution, and, and ask the administration to come back with a report on following up on a long-term solution. Anything more than that? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
We already did that.
And any, any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One to three? Passes. One to three, passes. Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, can I speak to a little bit?
Yes.
I'm hoping that as our administration has a chance to look at long-term. Long-term is not that long. It means hurry up and let's get going as fast as we can. I think we've all agreed on that. These ideas were to, to give some ideas. It would seem to me that part of what you may learn is that we can do this fast enough that we, cost-effectiveness of the short-term, what we want to be measured as to the generous offer from the Jaclyns. Does that get us more than if we can just hurry up and get the final version of the building launched and save the cost of moving from one place to another? And I think that's what you'll be learning as you get those two pieces of information that Ron's asked for and that we're asking for here.
And for clarification, in the, the motion for Judy's 10-year capital budget roadmap is we were going to pull out anything other than the PTE, right?
Yes.
What we're focusing on?
Any other discussions about professional technical? Okay, we have a plan. Moving on to the next agenda item. The ACCT conference. We had, all of us attended the ACCT conference, and that's an acronym that means. American Community College, Association of Community College Trustees. And I would like to ask each of the trustees to report individually because what we did in this conference that we went to is there were a number of sessions that provided training on, on a wide array of subjects. And we tried to split those up and attend as many different ones as we could. So each of the trustees, sometimes we would both be in, or two of us would be in one, one program, but more, more often it would be one. So I would like each of the trustees to sort of just hit the highlights of what they brought away from that conference in Seattle. Ron?
Oh, never have gone to, I've been to many seminars and retreats like this before. And so going to this, it was something new. And I had very low expectations of what I'd get out of this because being a newbie there. But it was incredible. It was four days. We attended as many as six classes a day, started eight in the morning, hour on. You'd sit in a roundtable within a group of sometimes as many as, as 100 other trustees, maybe as small as 50. So each classroom was at a different size. And that you always sat next to another trustee, and they might be from Oklahoma, the guy next to you is from New York, and the next guy's from Florida. They all have the same problems that we have, which is how do we, how do we get our students educated to be able to get them either to earn the continued education into the workforce? The presenters were all from trustees themselves, so it wasn't no professionals there teaching this. It was, it was other trustees teaching other trustees that got their head kicked in or made a stupid mistake, and they were there telling you how to keep from having that happen to you. And the dialogue that took place at the table was worth the price of admission. It was unbelievable because we learned, I learned things that I didn't know as far as some of the problems that we struggle with here, which is how do we advance this PTE, this CTE, which I keep saying this, is that nobody else, when you say PTE, it slips out because we call it that. Nobody else in the country knows what you're talking about because they all use CT. It's career and technical education. So when you talked about the percentage of their student body that is in CTE courses, it was 50, 60, 70% of them because the demand kept going there. And they, they, they saw that to be successful, that they prepared what the students needed to get the jobs and the things like that. So one of the things that you saw is how do you go through this transition? And they said it's sometimes it's a difficult structure when that you are not as focused on this. And I see this board and the commitment on our, our college president that they're going to help grow that percentage of our CTE involvement. So for me, it was six different meetings every single day with six different group of people and being able to share some of the ideas of what they did to market and to take economic development, fold that in. And the participation that you see at some of these colleges with the business involvement, like we saw last night where there was three CEOs that came in and made presentation about their needs at once, it sounds to me like that we could probably do a little bit better job of involving business leaders and getting, gathering data than what we've done in the past. So it was, Ken, all I can do is tell you is that it was an incredible experience for me, and I felt very lucky to be able to go.
Thank you. Judy?
Fun, Ron, because that was your, your first time. I've attended them over the years numerous times. I thought it was a valiant, valiant effort on our board's part to commit to all of us going to Seattle. It was the closest conference in will-be now for about three years. I think the next one's Chicago and then back to the East Coast, Christie. So we try to be cost-effective in what we're doing because the training does have great value. For me, the highlights were that Bill Gates spoke to our gathering. And I was impressed with what knowledge he had about community colleges and his obvious effort to suggest that technology has a big role in it. And I thought he had some, some good ideas to, to stretch our thinking and how we can, can help set policy to provide those kinds of use of technology. I attended a workshop conducted by the folks from the state of Missouri, and I was surprised how similar they were to us in that they're locally elected boards, that they have several different community colleges. They're trying to get together and hold hands to talk to the legislature because otherwise it's divide and conquer. It's a theme that's been dear to my heart and one that I think we're doing well in Idaho. And we're lucky. We only have three colleges to get to hold hands. And I think that will make a difference in how we can help our legislators find more ways to support community colleges. And then I was with Joe, I think, and Ken in the voluntary framework workshop. And so we can talk about that because you've already launched us into that. But it was, again, good to hear how others have used the program and finding it a very effective way to evaluate our, our programs.
Christie?
Thank you. Well, I, like Ron, enjoyed the opportunity to meet with so many different trustees and be in the roundtable discussion. I've gone to several of them, too. And part of the, the, I guess, the great experience when you come back is you know that NIC is a leader. We're doing a lot of the things that, that they're talking about. We've already been there, done that, so we're leaders. But my favorite presentation was by a former North Idaho College President, Michael Burke, who is now President, Milwaukee Community College. It's a career technical education college. And I think the enrollment, I could be wrong, but I think his enrollment's around 17,000 students. It's huge. And he gave a presentation on the metrics of the foundation. And he really, a lot of the stuff he talked about, he talked very highly of our director, Raell Anderson, and his experience working with her, and how successful they have been in marrying together the foundation's goals with the board's goals. And I took a lot away from that. We have a great foundation. Incredible people in our community that come out and support North Idaho College. But I feel that our board could probably spend a little more time communicating with our foundation and trying to align our goals. And he had a great PowerPoint presentation on exactly how they did that. And so I'm, I'm interested in pursuing that more in the future, and I think Raell can help us with that.
Well, it was certainly an interesting and diverse cross-section of individuals. And there was a lot of sharing of ideas and a lot of sharing of solutions to some of the common problems that we face. I focused on three areas. I attended the various breakout sessions that had to do with intercollegiate athletics, dealing with veterans, and with the stuff with Obamacare. As some of you know, I'm a licensed insurance agent, and I'm certified on the federal exchange. So I have a little bit of a knowledge base. I've done this for about 19 years. What I found, all three of them was interesting. In the PPAKA, at least in one of the presentations, I know I knew more than both the presenters combined. There's so much confusion and very few people really knew what they were talking about. And it was interesting to watch them trying to lead that. And even at the roundtable, and then it got to a point where I finally asked, is anybody else here a licensed agent? Is anybody else here certified? Is anybody else dealing with this? And nobody. And so we'd probably have been better if we'd had an HR person in there trying to talk about it than the poor trustees trying to muddle through it. But the point is, is that the colleges are really confused by this and upside down. And even people that would stand up there for half an hour and, and do a diatribe against it, then before they'd sit down would say, but I support it. I couldn't understand that. The intercollegiate athletics was interesting because one of the focuses was the contribution that they make to the overall campus experience and to campus life and to how they bring in students. You know, we're an example of that. We have a lot of athletes that come from all over the country, actually. Nationally recruit and internationally recruit. So it's just interesting to hear how the athletics have been integrated. And as far as student success, what some of the schools are doing, not just for the general population, but in particular for the athletes to meet their academic needs and help them to succeed and the accountability and what they're doing in the counseling program and that sort of thing. I was very excited and encouraged to hear some of the initiatives that are being undertaken regarding working with veterans and their integration into the education system. And how they're trying to take advantage of the, the skill sets that they, they gained in the military and the training and, and the, and the technical experience they have and the certifications and things like that. And in fact, I shared some with Dr. Burns on a couple of the programs, one primarily oriented towards paramedics. But they did it in such a way where they looked at it across the different services. Because a paramedic in the Air Force is not the same as a medic in the Army or the Marines or a corpsman in the Navy. And it was interesting how they looked at the different AFSCs, MOSs, and found the commonality and with the training and how they can incorporate that and then move forward with that. And as much as that, is, is there's a lot of training, especially for the enlisted folks. There's the Community College of the Air Force, and you can get credits in the service, like Air Force and there's equivalent to each of the services. But how you could give them the life experience credits and, and, and help them along and do that at minimal expense to give them a leg up and, and help them get through the programs and graduate more quickly and, and get on with their next, you know, phase of their life and be gainfully employed out there. So I was, I was impressed with that, and that really encouraged me to see the work that a lot of colleges are doing towards the, the returning veterans because there's, they seem to be facing a lot of challenges right now. And so, anyway, it was quite an experience.
My experience was beneficial, as you've heard from all the rest of the trustees. I attended a Chairs Academy, which ran for a day before the conference started. The Chairs Academy ran us through a number of situations, exploring skills and abilities and, and that the chairs needed. Some of it was acquaint, getting acquainted with Robert's Rules of Order and, and that sort of thing. Some of it was dealing with issues with the press and that sort of thing. It's all very helpful in terms of sitting, as Ron has already described, sitting with trustees from around the country, exploring experiences that they've had, finding out that their experiences are not so unique, that we all share those, and we all can learn from one another. So it was a very beneficial day. I want to comment on a couple of the sessions that I went to. I think we all went to about three in the morning and three in the afternoon. But the two that stand out in my mind I'd like to talk about is there was one on voluntary framework of accountability. And I wanted to go there and understand the concept and understand the program of voluntary framework of accountability because we're using it. And, and to see how it's being adopted across the country. And it's also being, it's also being developed by ACCT's staff. And one of the issues that has come up in other discussions that I've had are will the voluntary framework of accountability help us define the concept of success and completion as those terms are now going to be used across the board? You know, in, in a lot of the programs being supported by the State Board of Education and, you know, Complete Idaho and that sort of thing. Because I wanted to know if the, if the national organization or any of the state organizations had been able to find a, an acceptable definition that applied to community colleges with the concept of completion and success and graduation. Those terms are being defined now. And my fear is that if we don't define them for community colleges, we will be saddled with a definition that suits four-year institutions and maybe K-12 institutions, but does not reflect the kind of success we have in community colleges that doesn't address some of the, I mean, short-term classes and that sort of thing. The, the disappointing news I got was that they were just as frustrated with it on the national level as we are here. So there was no help there. Not to say there won't be in the future, but at this point in time, they're still dealing with that. The other session that I went to, I wanted to comment on, and Todd's already commented on it a little bit, the athletics session. I had hoped, quite honestly, to see a more data-driven and academic analysis of the value of athletics in, in community colleges. Because I believe there is a value, a real ascertainable and, and testable value of athletics in, in community colleges. Unfortunately, it was not a data-developed analysis. It was still the analysis that generally, the kind of general things that, that athletics do for community colleges. And I think we really need some of that. I think we need an assessment of the value of athletics in community colleges because there is value there, and we need to be able to visualize it, explain it, and, and adopt it in terms of our decision-making process. So I was a little disappointed in the athletic session because I didn't see that component, and I guess I was looking for it. That's, that completes, I think, our, our report unless anybody has anything to add. So we'll move on to the next, no new business, the Chairs Report. First off, I'd like to, it's my understanding Ron Dorn's going to be out of, out of the state next week. And he's leaving the state because he wants to have his birthday in Montana. So happy birthday, Ron. Last night, we had the Career Technical Education Workshop, as we've already discussed. It was very helpful in, I think, in helping us understand the parameters of the decisions we have to make. Today, we did have the ribbon cutting up in Sandpoint on the science lab. And it was really nice to see how excited people were up there about having NIC's presence. And not just the extent to which we have it now, but the extent to which they're looking forward to our, expanding our presence up there. There is a real, real sense of not just appreciation, but we need, this is the first step in a number of steps, and we need to move ahead with those steps. So it was nice, really nice to see that from the entire assemblage. The, I did meet with the faculty assembly. We had an interesting discussion. I think it was, I think it was helpful. I, I can understand their concerns. We are going to set up a workshop on tenure so that we can get this out, get it discussed and, and deal with it. We have not done that yet, not because we're avoiding it, but because we have had a number of other things on our plate in terms of workshops and that sort of thing. We have not lost sight of the need to, to get that on the agenda and, and get it taken care of. And, and I appreciate your comments about the concerns about the structure of the workshop. And we'll get together with, with the faculty in terms of when we set that up and clear it with the board in terms of how we're going to approach this so everybody has a, are comfortable about the approach to the workshop. Lastly, I'd like to report on the meeting we had in Lewiston. We now have an organization called the Idaho Community College Consortium. And IC Cubed. If you want to get scientific about it. Or if you want to have an acronym to use. The Consortium is made up of the, the presidents and the chairs of each of the community colleges in the state. We've gotten together two or three times a year for the last several years, trying to identify mutual issues that we need to come together on. And we're working on a couple of them, but the one I want to report to you on is the same thing that I talked about when I talked about the voluntary framework of accountability. All of the colleges in, the community colleges in Idaho recognize that by the State Board of Education, having defined concepts of completion, graduation, and success, that that has been, that has been defined in the context of four-year institutions and K-12. It does not address the wide range of accomplishments that community colleges have and the kinds of activities we engage in. So we want to, we want to develop, we're going to be proactive about it. We're going to develop our own definitions. And then we're going to go to the State Board of Education, to, to the legislature, wherever we have to go, and try and encourage them to adopt, if not, if not modify their definition, adopt a definition that applies to community colleges. We're underway with a study. We've asked Jerry G. to sort of put that together. We'll be working on it. It's an important thing for us overall because as we get down the road, I think the legislators are going to look at, okay, what's your graduation rate? What's your success rate? And if we get lumped in with four-year colleges, we're going to have different rates because we have people that engage in, like my wife who engages in. we have people that engage in, like my wife who engages in yoga and she's been doing it for five years and she's never graduated.
She looks good.
Yeah, she looks good, though. Right.
You're right with our stats.
Yeah. That's right. I keep telling her, she reckons our statistics. But these definitions will be used in the future to define, I think, funding levels, priorities for buildings, all kinds of things on the state level. And so I think we have to get these definitions straightened out. Now, it's going to be important to our future. So it's one of those things that this IC Cubed is working at, working on. Another issue that we've discussed and we're going to continue to work on with the Association of Counties is the out-of-county tuition. It is an issue mainly for us here in Cooney County. And if we can find, if can't find a way to universally address it, then we will probably be coming before this board with a suggestion to resolve it within the five northern county area. And that completes my report. Any... Yes?
Well, since tenure was such a popular topic at that, did anybody bring up the RIF policy?
I haven't talked about that in the last, since the last meeting.
I didn't know if that's been talked about too as another hot topic since tenure was on the table.
No, I think that's still with the revisions, the overall revisions that the president is undergoing, a study of all of the policies and that's within those policies. Any other remarks for the good of the order? Judy?
Just one I asked to share with board members, an article that came out of the Lewiston Morning Tribune. I think Shannon helped make a copy of your share and turn it over. It talks about education, the higher, the State Board of Education and funding in Idaho. Not an unknown topic, but here we go again with a legislative session. Today in Sandpoint, I was visiting with legislator Eskridge and he too understands that probably in time, our community college will be asking that county to help out in new ways. And he understands there's a need for that. So I think as board members, we're beginning to educate legislators to the new opportunities that are coming along. But anyway, enjoy the article. I think it's...
Nice way to say that.
Any other comments for the good of the order? Before we adjourn, I want to just remind everybody that on November 7th, from 9:00 to 11:30, the aerospace building at the airport is the ribbon cutting ceremony, correct? And the governor will be there. And then on November 14th, the scholarship celebration in the sub here, 5:30 to 7:00. On November 20th, we have our executive session and board meeting here. And then there's a legislative reception on December 4th, 5:00 to 7:00, here on NIC's campus at the sub. And then again in December, we have our executive session and board meeting. And December 19th, the associate degree nursing program pinning ceremony. Those are the upcoming meetings that we have on the agenda and with that, we are adjourned.